I must get it in the pa- in my packet.
I saw it on the floor.
Yeah, a while ago.
Here, this will keep it from falling out. Well, maybe.
I was looking for my.
Oh, great.
Didn't find it.
That's probably what happened.
Sorry.
Here, let me try.
Where was that?
I think maybe that whole.
What do you mean?
Too big or something, huh?
Oh, it's, um, it's probably noodle, chicken, chicken pad, I believe. Good evening, and I was trying to remember what you were.
Perfect.
Yapping at it.
There you go.
That should be, just needed a little.
Hi, Joe, how's it going? Hi, Joe. Hi, Amy.
Hey there.
We'll get us on this side this time?
Yeah.
You want me to push it over?
How you doing?
Good.
Yep, Sam gets excited when he starts touching.
You want me to do those classes with us?
Uh huh. Sam gets excited when he starts touching his projector.
I always wanted over here, you know?
I know.
Is that a new one? It's really. Or maybe I'm just used to seeing ones at work, but I never see them that nice.
It will.
Yeah, I tried to get it right on the edge there. If you want to turn it on, we can line it up.
Yeah, we'll figure it out when it comes. I think nobody's using it until. Six fifty or so. You bet.
How's your weekend?
Huh?
How's your weekend?
Nice.
I bet.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Bobby R. Jones. Bobby R. Chen with us.
The women, his number, it's for. He has beans?
Yeah.
Goes freezing.
Me and Scott, because Scott started, he shit.
Respond at all to. Did you hear my response?
I did.
So they said.
That's a district.
Yeah, they, well, they said what they would do, they would really.
I'm hoping it comes up tonight.
Wow, because really short-term.
Interesting putting strawberries in with it.
Yeah, good evening. Fun weekend, but I checked up the list. I took the students all weekend.
Oh, you were?
Kind of.
Hi, Scott.
Hey, how you doing?
Good. How are you?
I'm okay.
Rick, I agree. I agree.
Thank you.
I just didn't.
I will too.
I figured I'm not gonna.
That's good.
No, okay.
We just talked about it.
Okay.
So, and Joe's who comes.
Hopefully.
Hey. You and your ex-pat. And I go, are you serious? That's where you're gonna go with. There had been some that we had talked about, and we were cleaning some out, and we were looking at those old newspaper things. Uh oh. And then. Did you throw them all away? Most of them. I got one. Do you even have any thing? I don't know. I don't know, I'm still interested. Was this your pocket? How are you getting my card here? Huh? Oh, you just got stuff.
How's daughter?
That's it. Mom must have sent some stuff.
That's good.
Probably, I don't know. You got the agenda? No. That's just people ask me questions, and I gotta look at stuff, and I can. And you give them away. And when Mr. Colm is up, it'll be.
Very well.
He's the person I keep track of, at least, I guess.
Overworked.
Me too.
Is she, what does she do again?
Although it does seem.
So hard to explain.
I don't know, not all of them.
She was a medical consultant. She, she consults with the doctors, offices, helping to go and does insurance. She got hired by them to consult. Then they brought her on full time.
Somebody, everybody else brings him up.
She runs. All the programming. For the doctors to get paid. There's two types of ways to get paid. They get paid by billing for services, then they get paid by insurance companies for doing certain things. She has a hundred and forty physicians, and she has to make sure they're all doing what they're supposed to. Oh, she works for the CEO, COO.
Yeah.
So she's.
They're never. I don't know how that.
Never.
I don't know how that happens. Talking to the charter says.
I expect the six thirty, so you're only gonna.
That it'll be judged by the. The most sensitive person in council.
I'm gonna stay in bed.
Yeah, seriously.
She didn't appreciate that.
Yeah, you bet. Yeah, that thing turned out awesome.
What did you do this time?
Yeah, I almost thought about like.
What is it gonna be?
I was trying to adjust my mic, and I'm like, eh, it's gonna look in the board, make you how, so I'm gonna be.
I'm calling on the tenth, he's coming the next day.
Yeah, I thought, because I was like, God, this is painful, you know? Yeah, exactly, that's what I was thinking.
Oh, can we start?
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah, no, I was kidding.
But it actually was kind of exciting, because. He had to go to traffic.
Down there.
I think they have each other at daycare. And, well, and the babysitter.
And I told her that. And it's just traffic court, but it's court. Whereas who called the judge or whatever, like.
Yeah, I know, I, I was.
We go there and. Let's see where that gets us. You saw the. And my son goes, no, I'm a defendant. The judge was. Well, your party wasn't accepted.
I was just chatting with Eric about it, that, you know, our thought initially was that he can do verbal, answer both questions in about ten minutes or so. And if we need to ask more questions than that, then.
Evening, Steve, how you doing?
Direct message.
Good.
Happy last week. We talked about, why do you like your disconnect between counsel and what I'm presenting, and you know what I mean? And we talked, and I'm like, you know what, I think you need just kind of a basic overview of this.
I think I love this too. Now it's cold.
Well, and it's kind of sticking together, but it was kind of that way.
And, and I guess.
Got delivered earlier. Noodles. Noodles was what I lost sticky. Uh huh.
My thought was, we can pick it up under our schedule.
Yes, sure.
I think somebody's telling me I should pick up my mail as well.
I think I got the same message. This is mine.
I think so.
Forgot it, use me, I always remember.
I, I forget it sometimes, because I change bags.
Yeah, I have that.
I should be doing it in my bag.
Thought I want someone to help me.
Right, exactly. Well, actually, my husband said, when he worked at the post office, and he worked at the mayor and the general.
Yeah.
They had pulled up their ID badges when they went out, so they knew that they were an employee.
Nobody was taking anything or.
Right, of course, most of the time when something happens. It is an employee that's a friend. Thank you.
Hey, uh, just reading on my phone, I didn't realize I could use this. Kind of cook it up to monitor and a mouse and a keyboard, and off I go.
One of those processes that says that we don't get stuff handed out in the meeting?
Or menu.
Boys and their toys.
Yeah. I know ERA had one.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would too, but. We can't make a decision on it anyway.
Okay, ladies, just let us know when we're recording.
You're recording.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the city council study session. Our first agenda item is Slate Communications update. A representative from Slate Communication is present to give counsel an update on the communications plan. They brought the whole squad here. Come on up. Welcome back.
Thank you, thanks for having us. Two-thirds of us right now. We have backup. Well, we're excited to officially present, now that the contract is signed. We really hit the ground running and know that we have kind of three updates to give you this evening. One is the state of the city. The other is on the magazine, and the third is really starting kind of big picture conversation about a new signature event for Inglewood. So. I'd like to spend most of the time talking about the state of the city presentation, and we just passed around a, a two-page piece of paper. The, the first page is all about the state of the city options. And what I'd like you to kind of think about as I walk through this document is these top five questions. Who is going to present? What kind of multimedia elements would you like to include? Is there a particular time of day that you'd like the event to be held? Have you thought about partners for the event? And really, who ultimately is your audience for this event? So. As we've mentioned before, Slate has a lot of experience coordinating the state of the city at a lot of different levels for lots of different communities. And I'd like to point out Douglas County, the city of Fort Collins, and the city of Lone Tree, and what's worked well for those. There are some similarities, and then there are some differences that really worked particularly well in each of those communities. So in Douglas County, there are three county commissioners, and all three of them presented and had speaking parts, scripted speaking parts at that event. It was very video-heavy and had a lot of multimedia aspects to it. And their staff is equipped to, to do the, the video. They have staff on site that did a, a lot of B-roll, and Slate worked to, to help, I think, pull it all together. But it, that particular piece was mostly produced by staff. They held a morning event and didn't include any partners. It was free and open to the public, but they sent VIPs invitations that were tailored to those individuals, so they knew about the event ahead of time beyond, you know, just a email blast and kind of your typical city communication that your typical resident would receive.
Can I ask your question?
Sure, go ahead.
At the outset, I like these questions. There's one question that I would like to have answered. What was their purpose? That, that isn't being asked. It's like, what, what is the purpose? And I'm sure that with each one of them, it was a little different. That depends on who you invite. I'd love to know what they were, what their objective was.
Mm-hmm.
If you know.
Kim, can you speak to Douglas County?
I can. I would say their purpose for Douglas County was to highlight partnerships and collaboration, and so that was the theme of the address itself, and that's also how they organized the event. So they were very careful to make sure that they included all of the different entities and organizations that helped create the accomplishments that they talked about that day. So for Douglas County specifically, I'd say it was more about celebrating and recognizing partnerships. And then as we go through, we can talk to each one.
Were there partnerships like businesses and things like that, or was it like having MOA in our building?
Yes. How's that, you mean? Yeah, so it was multi-governmental. So it's all the cities that were actually in the county itself. And then they, of course, had some very big infrastructure projects, so it was also working with CDOT and some of the other organizations. And then, of course, the private businesses that helped generate the economy in Douglas County. So it was, you know, yes, yes, and yes to the.
Done it, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good question. So Slate's role in, in that presentation was creating a prezi, and the video then was integrated into that presentation, did some behind, leave behind collateral, and designed the event invitations. With the city of Fort Collins, they did slight, things slightly differently. The mayor and the city manager were the only presenters at, at that event. They held their event in the evening, again, did not include partners. And it was free and open to the public, and I think they did a similar invitation process where it was open to the public, but sending these kind of VIP invitations to, to those key stakeholders and, and community members that are really involved in the community. Another piece that they did differently was they opened up the event at the end for Q and A, unscripted and answered questions, and I believe it was just the mayor and city manager that answered those questions. Staff's role was writing all of the, the speaking points, organizing the event, creating the promotional material and the leave behind collateral. And at that time, Slate was the in-house staff to work on that. So slightly different there as well.
And I'd say that the purpose of those were certainly to acknowledge accomplishments of the year, right? Every state of the city focuses on that. But it was also to underscore that sense of transparency, and that's why you got the Q and A at the end. So they really wanted to engage the community and let them ask those questions that maybe you don't get the chance to ask on an everyday basis, or don't think to ask on an everyday basis. So that's a, a, a big reason why that open town hall style question and answer period was included in the event.
So with the city of Lone Tree, their purpose was really to tap into the business community. That's why they have historically held the event in the middle of the day as a lunch, and it is ticketed and it costs money because it's in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and is a moneymaker and revenue generator for the chamber. So the chamber's role was to do all of the event logistics, booking the venue, which was at the Lone Tree Art Center, and handling all the RSVPs electronically. And they sold table. Businesses could purchase tables and be, you know, title sponsors for the event. And then their logo was also on like an intro and closing presentation slide. And then it was really an opportunity to highlight the businesses that are members of the Chamber of Commerce. And the actual state of the city presentation then was given solely by the mayor, and staff did all of the coordination on her behalf, writing the talking points, putting the, it's been both a prezi and a PowerPoint presentation with very, very minimal video, usually a, a kind of comedy piece, you know, from a, a well-known TV show or something that would tie a, a theme together. And every year, the focus has been a little bit different. Last year, it was on partnerships and transportation and mobility improvements. But again, I'd say the overall purpose was to really tap into the business community and provide an update to them at that event. And at the time, Slate really just did some template designs for the prezi and the PowerPoint presentation. So with that, we've kind of left it open for a discussion about your thoughts on, kind of how you'd like to see the, the event unfold here in Inglewood.
Awesome, thank you. Turn it over to council for some feedback on this. Councilor Martinez?
I just have a question. Do you recall offhand about how many folks attended each of these? Was it like a hundred? Was it five hundred? I haven't.
Okay, hold on.
I don't expect you to totally know the numbers, but I mean, is, was it like a thousand? Was it a couple hundred?
A couple hundred. I think is this safe?
Yeah. I know that event venue in Lone Tree, you know, holds about two fifty with round tables for a meal. So it was probably no more than two fifty, two hundred maybe.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilor Martinez?
Well, I'd like to hear from the city manager on what all has been done so far, because the council's been talking about this since last August. So I want to know kind of some of the foundation that's already been laid that you guys might be working with, if you might go over a little bit of that, city manager, I'd appreciate it.
You know, I think we got a little bit of that last time we chatted about this, but if you want to do a real brief overview, I'd appreciate it.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, there has been work done on this, obviously, to kind of basically establish an outline of what would be discussed. We worked with the mayor to hit some high points or talking points for five major themes that he wanted to discuss that all emanated from the city council's goal-setting session that you all participated in in two thousand and sixteen. Essentially, we wanted to hit the high points of how we're improving customer service, what we're doing with place making, how we're improving communication, what we're doing for events, and last one slipping my mind, economic development, of course, what we're doing to, you know, be a business-friendly community. So we looked at laying that out as an outline and putting some talking points around that, looking at what the different departments have done that have done to aid and add to that each of those goals, so that we might be able to put a PowerPoint presentation together, or a prezi, as was talked about tonight, just another slide presentation, so that we could share that with any of a number of persons in the public. What we hadn't done was clearly, I think, identify what audience are we truly targeting. I think what we were trying to do in our, in my naivety towards this was hit just about everybody, business, residents, everything else. And I know that is something that we would really help to rely on Slate to help us with. But heretofore, I think we also had a date established, and that date is now coming past. That would have been last week, last Wednesday, the twenty-second was the date we were targeting to try to do that, just to try to, again, kick the new year off and saying, hey, here's what we did, here's what, how we're gonna move forward. Again, look at paying homage to the history of the community and saying, you know, the same entrepreneurial spirit that helped create Inglewood is helping to take us to get to the next level and incorporate that as well.
You've heard, I think, some of my thoughts and, and, you know, that we worked in conjunction with the city manager's office to talk about, about an evening event potentially here at the city center on the second floor, utilizing both Hampden Hall as well as the community room, and, you know, mainly this entire second floor area to create a little bit of a pre and post reception. We talked about.
Could I just get the second part of my question answered then, from them? Is, are you working with them to work on the?
Hold on just a second, I'm trying to answer your question, then we'll come back to Slate if they have some gaps to fill in.
That's gonna be one time when you just don't interrupt me.
What's that?
Is there, are you working with the?
Concede the floor for just a moment here, I'm not done talking.
Are you working with the city manager's office?
Concede the floor, ma'am. Ma'am?
It was still my, my question, and the second part of that question was, what were they able to utilize, and are they working with the city manager's office on parts that we had already done since we had discussed this? So are you including that, working with what had already been done and what we had already discussed as part of the council goals and objectives, and what our city manager already said? How are you integrating that, and how are you working with them? That was just the second part of my question.
Fair enough, go ahead, concede, go ahead.
Apologize.
No, fair enough.
I think what you're seeing before you today is our starting point. What we heard after spending some time with all of you is that we needed to have a conversation around the, the questions that you see at the top of the page, as well as the purpose, before we could go down the path of deciding the details. So I think what you see before you is exactly where we are.
All right, thank you for allowing.
No, no problem. And, you know, again, all I was just trying to highlight was just that, you know, we have, you know, tentatively answered these questions, and I think, you know, if we could start with those as kind of a starting point, you can say, hey, I agree or disagree, maybe we should do something different. We can start to kind of begin to have the conversation that way. But I think Mr. Keck is right, this is sort of a shotgun approach. I think that that makes some sense, given where we're at in, in communications generally. You know, the idea of segmenting this out doesn't really appeal to me a ton. I think the general broad message is that we're in this together, and that the business community and the local residents, you know, have a vital role in our community, and that they rely on each other, and that it is a reciprocal relationship and a long-term partnership that we need to be viewing this as. And so that's why I think, you know, as far as the audience, I was trying to kind of hit both. Again, I don't think we have major capacity issues, you know, I'd be shocked if we got, you know, I think the capacity of Hampden Hall's over three hundred, and so again, we were thinking, if we had more than three hundred folks, I mean, that would just be an absolute home run. We could do some spillover here in the community room if we needed to. And again, I like the idea of the pre and post reception with some of our local restaurants, just to highlight some local businesses, as well as just provide some sort of food and finger food and kind of thing. And again, we were thinking an evening event. We talked a little bit last time about including some multimedia or doing a video as part of the presentation. I think that's a wonderful idea. I think we'd have to talk a little bit about how we would produce that video, or how would we go about that. Again, I'll turn it over to council for some feedback and trying to answer these questions for Slate to keep this thing moving forward. Councilor Martinez?
The other part of the goals, and I, I think you guys were here when I said this, is whatever we do, that it can be posted on the website so that we get more traffic than just the single event. And. I mean, Joe has answered a lot of the questions, and I, the object of, of the event for me is to help present Inglewood in a positive light, also to encourage people to invest in our community, to develop and, and help our city be prosperous.
I agree. I think a big part of this is, is both internal and external perception of Inglewood as a place to live and to do business. And I think if we cover some points of community pride and some hope for the future, that, that might be successful. Other questions or comments? Mayor Protem Jullit?
First of all, I want to thank you for putting all this together. I just have a very simple question is, I hear a lot of people that say they're not able to come at certain times. Have you guys ever livestreamed your event so that we can also save it, put it online for people to watch later? That's my only question.
Yeah, that's a great question. I think we have the capabilities to do that. I think that this year, Lone Tree is looking at doing that, because historically, it was never broadcast or videotaped, and so it was just a one-time event, and if you were there, you saw it. We certainly always shared the presentation as a PDF and had it on our website, but then residents would have to narrate, you know, the content themselves. So I think that's a, a good idea.
In Fort Collins, that was standard. It would be broadcast live, both online and on the cable channel. And Ryan just leaned over and said, we certainly have ways to do that for this event. We could make sure to stream it in real time to engage those folks that can't get here.
Maybe able to utilize some of our live streaming capability. You know, I, I, I love the idea of recording it so that it can be on our YouTube channel and, and other places, and also live streaming. I love both those ideas. Again, I don't want to create a large production cost, though. You know, I want this to be a simple, one camera in the back of the room kind of thing.
We have it.
Yeah, but it's not in Hampden Hall, which where, where I was thinking the presentation would actually happen. And maybe that's a question. But, you know, that's, I was just thinking that venue is kind of set up. We could kind of file folks in there and then, you know, do the presentation, and again, the pre and post kind of outside. So I guess I'll just ask you more directly. I mean, do you guys like the audience idea of kind of the, you know, what I'm describing as the shotgun approach, we're in this together, or do you guys like the idea of segmenting it out a little bit? Councilor Olson, do you have some thoughts?
Well, it, it sounds a lot like what we did with the business summit that we did.
Well, it sounds a lot like what we did with the business summit that we did, if we're talking about state of, of these kinds of, these five issues. And the Q and A timing is just a different venue, a different, shorter, maybe venue than we did before, we did a whole morning. I would be particularly concerned if we want to do just your traditional resident of the community, that we make it informative enough so that it's not just about business, you know, and I think some of these are helpful. The placemaking, of course, would be fraught with some questions that might feel like, well, it's not very placemaking in some neighborhoods. So I just think we need to be ready for that. I get, I, I'm fine with doing wide-open audience, I just, I mean, I keep hearing from businesses, and I've not asked citizens that they want it to be informative to the point where they get more information than what we normally give them. And sometimes that's training more, and that's different than this, so.
You know, just on that, on that point, you know, I do think we'll have plenty for the residents, you know, I think part of, maybe what you're looking at is kind of those themes that we were trying to come up with, the five themes, but, you know, we'll also be covering ground on, you know, what we view as substantial accomplishments for the residential community, and so hopefully some of those highlights, you don't happen to have that list, do you? It wasn't in our packet, but, you know, again, I did provide that to the council prior, just to give an idea of where Mr. Keck and I were at on brainstorming with that. You know, one of the other things I think that's not on the list that I was going to add was, you know, long-term capital needs. You know, taking a look at some of the long-term capital needs that we have and what are, you know, what are some of the opportunities and, and, you know, issues we're dealing with.
So just, just a point of clarification. I, I know we got this before, but it would be really helpful if when we're going to, we're going to, and I really appreciate that we're talking about tonight, so I'm really thankful for that. But as, when we come to this, we had no information given to us at all. It would just be helpful to have that stuff reattached so we see it again. I remember it vaguely. I wasn't even thinking about it, though, when I looked at this, said, oh yeah, there was, there were some things on there. So I thought we were starting over, in a sense. So just a point of information would be helpful.
Yeah, no problem. I think as we get a little bit deeper into actually, you know, getting some feedback on the talking points, that, you know, I think we can bring that back and actually, again, I think we can start from a more macro level of when and where and who and those kind of questions, and then kind of delve into what is the exact message there. I know we kind of want to make sure that that message fits with what all those questions are, so I understand the relevance, but maybe if we start with some of the feedback on the bigger issues, is everybody generally on board with what I'm kind of describing as far as time and venue and those type of issues, or do we have, do we want to discuss those? Councilmember Yates?
I didn't catch when you were planning on doing this, because I know...
Right now, we're just saying evening. I don't think we've picked a date, but, you know, if, if we could, you know, I think we should, you know, start to think about a date, you know, if there's a particular time of year or a particular day of the week, you know, that everybody feels like they have, this is, I think, a decent time to throw it out there on the table so that we don't pick one of those days.
I, there's one concern is, I don't think it'd be good if we do too much of a shotgun effect, because then we kind of lose the focus of the thing, we're just kind of throwing a bunch of it on the wall and hopefully some of it will stick. So I think we probably need to narrow it down a little bit more as to what we're trying to accomplish, you know, so we don't get too many topics thrown in there, because we, as a council, we kind of have a habit of shoving too much in at one time.
I agree. I mean, again, I'm envisioning about a 20 maximum of a 30-minute presentation, and so, you know, I agree, I think that the logistics of, you know, engineering it to fit that time of space, just to make it a little more bite-sized, is going to limit us a little bit. And that's why we kept it, you know, Eric and I kept it to just a one-page bullet point when presented to council, just so we don't get TMI in there, you know what I mean, and just really stick to what I'm viewing as sort of the highlights. And again, I find that the highlights that we picked were both interesting to the business community as well as the residential community, for the most part, but I'm open to feedback on that. Councilmember Martinez?
My question is about partners. I know we talked about last time, maybe somehow incorporating or working with MOA on this. Is this still something we want to do, or how would we kind of include them in this?
Do you like that idea?
I, I think it's a great idea, especially if it's going to be on this floor, they're here, visibly present, they are a huge part of our community. Just wondering how we might flesh that part out.
That's still part of the plan. I think we left it right where I think we left it last time, which was that we've had some initial conversations with MOA, they expressed interest in partnering with us on it. I think we just need to let them know when and give them advance notice and make sure that they're capable of meeting us on that date. And that would be, you know, wonderful, because we could do a cross-promotional event, we could keep the museum open, and that would make our little pre- and post-reception that much, that much better.
So that's what role you're imagining of them playing, is just they're open during that time and we tell folks that this is here?
Yeah, and again, I view them as, you know, view this as a promotional opportunity for them as well, so, you know, I don't know what we'd want to call them, a partner, I guess, in this event, I think would be appropriate. And so we could kind of treat them as if they were a sponsor, you know, include them in all the marketing materials, include them in the, you know, pre- and post kind of slides that you were just describing for sponsors of other events. Is part of the communications contract a sponsorship program?
Yes.
Do we have any information on that? Because are we thinking about this as a sponsorship, as kind of a one-off before we get our annual sponsorship program together?
It really comes down to, I think, timing of the event. We are really aligning the sponsorship program with the first publication of the magazine, and I think that it's conceivable that we would have an opportunity to include this event as a sponsorship opportunity. I know that we'll be adding more sponsorship opportunities throughout the year, maybe the first packet doesn't include everything for the, the entire year, we'll be building it up as we go, but I think that there is absolutely an opportunity to, to include sponsors.
Fair enough, thank you. Councilmember Russell?
And maybe this has already been brought up, and I apologize if it has. Are we going to include the public, is it going to be open to the public?
You know, my thought was, again, that we would create a list of invites, but that we would hold it open to the public. Again, I just don't envision us having a major capacity issue, again, and that's why we kind of thought about this as the venue, because we could handle some overflow if, you know, 50 people showed up who we weren't really anticipating, and we could accommodate them, and that'd be just fine. And again, in my mind, if we get that type of civic engagement, it's, it's an ultra-home run. So my thought was invites with open to the public, both.
Okay, thank you.
And, you know, I like the idea of electronic, you know, they brought up the idea of electronic. I was thinking we're going to have postage costs, but, you know, electronic makes a ton of sense if we've got everybody's emails. Councilmember Olson, I believe?
I think it might be good to partner with someone, I don't know if our chamber would be a good one to do it with, but maybe two or three different ones that would get out, because I actually worry more about people not coming than, than coming. And if it's an evening, some of our businesses might not come, but they might come because they go to Inglewood Chamber things, so maybe they would come with that. I don't, I don't know. But certainly if we want residents there, I think we have to do it in the evening or kind of a breakfast, because I don't, I mean, most people during the day wouldn't be able to take time. If we want it just to be business-oriented, then I think the workday is probably okay to do, but might be just be different crew that we get.
You know, again, I like the evening just because of, you know, scheduling issues, you know, again, I identified the last Wednesday of the month several years back when I did my community meetings, just because that's a day where there's no board and commission meetings, that type of thing. And so that's why we picked, you know, just because that's the date that I happened to, you know, again, in the past, think was a good day to have events. So the last Wednesday of the month, that's how we came up with February 22nd. Councilmember Yates?
Just as a consideration, depending upon what we present during the presentation, if we're talking about, you know, how this community is a good place for families to come in and businesses to come in, if we paint that picture, we've kind of caught their attention. If we do it on like a Saturday morning, then that gives them an opportunity afterwards to go out and take a look at some of these things that we've talked about. But a lot of it depends upon the presentation itself.
Councilmember Martinez, do you have a...
Yeah, I have two questions. I guess, once we nail down who exactly, you know, our audience is going to be, if it's going to be mixed or mostly residential, how we're going to put that list of kind of like VIP-targeted invites together? And then, two, are we going to do a Q and A, or, or no, or we don't know?
We put together a potential invite list of about, how many would you say? Do you remember, Allison? 200-ish? Well, and the, I think what we started with was our 50 largest employers, you know, each getting a couple tickets, every board and commission getting a couple of tickets, and so I think, you know, we only got to about 150 as a result of that, so I think we could potentially expand it to all board and commission members and top 100 businesses or something like that. Might be an easier way to just create an initial list. You know, as always, though, I think that each of us have different ideas and segments, and so I was thinking that council members could have some discretion over a certain amount of invites, just to help push it out there. And, you know, again, I think that we really can invite, you know, pretty much anybody and everybody. If the list gets too long, my thought was, we could all add to the list, and if it got too long, then we could have a conversation about reeling it in. But again, my thought is we could invite over 300 people fairly safely, knowing that the response rate's certainly not going to be anywhere near 100%. So I'm not too worried about the invite list, but I think we should begin building that, and perhaps we could put out that list that we had created to the council so that they could see that and add to it as they saw fit. Is that appropriate, or does anybody have feedback on that before we move on, maybe to the second question?
Well, and with that, you said that we're, there's tickets, are we going to have a ticketed event, or it's just going to be invites and people show up? Or we don't know yet?
Yeah, I don't know if there would actually be a physical ticket. I'm not envisioning a physical ticket, but I am envisioning an invite to, to try to get more people here.
I think you'd have to RSVP in some way, you would never know who's coming.
Agreed. There would be an RSVP to this email or whoever we designated. I don't know if that's Slate or if that's our internal staff. Sorry, go ahead.
So I, I think we should talk about days of the week that make sense. You're offering a Saturday. You're suggesting a Wednesday. I, I mean, I don't, I don't think all of us have to be there. I can't do the next last Wednesday of every month through June. It's just my life. So, and, and it seems to be a popular night for other kinds of things, so, but they're not, they're work things. So I, I don't know, I mean, certainly pick a Wednesday and do it, I don't need to be there, but is that the best time? Is a Saturday better? Is a Friday night? Is a Monday night when we don't have, we don't have city council?
That might be an option, a fifth Monday or something. Go back to Councilmember Yates.
Here again, I, I think we probably should figure out what we're going to say first.
Purposes.
Yeah, purpose, and before we start narrowing down a date.
Does anybody really want to target the audience to either the business or the residential community, or do you think a hybrid makes sense? Maybe we should start with that question.
I like the hybrid, I'm sorry.
Yep, no, go ahead, let's, let's, yeah, let's keep this thing moving, please.
I like the hybrid idea, just because we've never done it before, it'd be nice to, I, I think you call it the shotgun method, whatever.
Probably sell it very well.
Just be nice to hit a few things, and our businesses are important, our residents are important, and our services are important. So those, to me, those are the three things that, you know, we should highlight on, and however we can do that in an effective way, that makes it entertaining and moving, in my opinion, that's what I'd like to see.
I think that's what sets it apart from the last thing we did, too. It gives us a new field to play in and see if it works, rather than the same old, but we hope those same olds come because they're really critical to the city. But I think that makes it hard to figure out what the purpose is, other than updating on what we're doing. I, yeah, I like the themes, I think those can work. You had other things on your last thing.
And those were more specific about accomplishments, you know, for example, transparency and getting our council meetings streamed, and, you know, can you think of some of these other, I'm trying to remember what some of the, yeah, OpenGov, we talked a lot about some business accomplishments, you know, SBA, those type of things.
What were the neighborhood things? I can't remember. Do you remember? I don't remember anything about that. Because so far, I haven't heard people come up and say they love what's been happening to create places in neighborhoods.
Job fair, I think, is a great example, you know, you know, we had 500 jobs available to our community, we really need to highlight that, and it's coming back up, and so we really need to get more people applying for our local jobs. I think if we take a look at the list, you'll find that a lot of them are interested in the residential community, I just don't have it in front of me.
Is the list we're talking about the outline?
Yes.
I have it in front of me.
Awesome. Would you mind reading it off?
Sure.
What day was it?
I don't remember, I just had it saved on here for some random file. It says, "Recent innovation and accomplishments, which is balanced budget, introduction, introduction to priority-based budgeting, streaming council meetings, job fair, new economic development program, SBDC and SBA startup in a day, comprehensive plan in the Parks and Rec master plan, River Run Trailhead, development projects, police building, and then future vision items are economic development, customer service, communication, placemaking, and events."
Yep. And I think the, the one thing I would add to that is the long-term capital needs. You're hearing a lot of folks talking about, you know, drainage up north, and yet again, yeah, I think adding much to that is going to be kind of difficult in a, in a short presentation, so.
Well, residents are going to want to know about what's at stake for their neighborhoods, so that wasn't on the list. And they want to know that whatever we do with economic development, or that it really will help preserve and enhance neighborhoods, and what are we doing for safeguarding that? I think that's what we're hearing more on a Monday night than anything else from your just good, solid resident.
So what do you think is the best example of that that we could use? I've already got comp plan on there, we've got the parks, you know, we've got...
Parks do a lot.
Yeah, and then we've got the new River Run Trailhead. I mean, I, I think, again, we tried to hit some of the highlights. Councilmember Yates?
Sometimes you, you have that on there, but sometimes you need to talk about how it accomplishes it, not just it's there.
Yep.
Because a lot of, I mean, the comp plan's a big document. All of these are fairly big documents, and to understand them. So to get to the nuances, we do need to kind of explain how it works and show the people how it works.
Yep, and why it's of value. I totally agree. We'll connect those dots, I think, in the presentation. Again, I was just trying to give some bullet points as to some basic talking points. Do you have another?
You know, the whole, the whole title of this is "State of the City." When I think of State of the Union address or State of the State address, I think of what, what condition are we in, and how, how are we moving forward, and what is our plan for? That's what I think a "State of X" means. And it would be, I, I think if that's what we're going to have, and Slate can tell us whether that's not really what that means or not, is this, how, how are we doing with business? How are we doing with the city? How are we doing with neighborhoods? How are we doing with road care? And, and I think that, you know, if we're going to say it's a "State of the City" address, then let's do a "State of the City" and make sure that we have an address to the residents and our business community, that here's what we're doing, and here's, here's why it's good, and, and, you know, and here's how our budget's been, and here's how the surpluses we've had, and, you know, there's a lot of negative out there, let's, let's make sure we also, you know, give them some positive with that, say, you know, we're not in, you know, we're not in free fall, there's actually wonderful things happening. And so if we can, if, to me, you know, as a, what is, what is our message? Our message is the "State of the City" address, and how that relates to what we want to say, and I...
Just to dovetail off of that, we do have two great surveys, one that we did, the telephone survey, that had great feedback from the residents on what they're looking for and what they value, as well as some feedback in a non-scientific manner through ACE that I think would be valuable for the business community, that might kind of guide us down that path of that conversation. Councilmember Russell, I believe.
I agree with Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Gillett. In a sense, I do believe it ought to be about the state of the city, but I don't think it should just be a positive spin, because there are concerns that our citizens have, and we need to be honest about those things and that we need to address those things also. So I don't think this should be just a positive spin on everything, because then that's going to send a message to the neighbors or to the citizens that, hey, I don't see it that way. So I think we need to be open and honest about really what's going on in the city.
I agree. I appreciate that perspective. Councilmember Yates, did you have another? I, I'm not, you know, I do want to, again, provide a platform for all the positive things we have in our community. Unfortunately, I just think our communication just wasn't to a point where we had great channels to be pushing this type of stuff out. So, you know, I will admit that I think I've got, you know, general positive spin on this, but I do agree that I think a portion of this needs to focus on, you know, what are the threats or issues that we're facing as a community, to sort of plant that seed for that conversation moving forward, and hopefully get some engagement on those.
I think as long as you do that, it'll be okay. But if you don't, if we don't talk about our challenges, then I think people will blow us off.
I think that's fair. I think that's fair.
[laughing] Having diffusers, so.
Back to Councilmember Martinez's second question, which I believe was, will there be a Q and A? Do we have a preference on that? I mean, I'd be happy to do a Q and A. I'd be happy for all of us to get up on the stage and do a Q and A together or with Eric. I'm open to your guys' preference on that. Does anybody have a preference?
I think Eric should do it all. [laughing]. You get all the Q and As.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I'll do the presentation, and I'll hand it over, you know?
I'm teasing. I like the idea of Q and A. I think, like it was mentioned before, you know, it kind of shows extra layer of transparency to folks, and I think people will really feel comforted with that. Like, at our council meetings, we don't exactly have that format, so, and it doesn't, I mean, we could always do, like, write in your question and pass the cards to the end, and it doesn't have to be somebody standing up asking a question. It could be a little less, you know, rigid that way. People might feel more comfortable to ask questions if they're not asked to stand up and speak in front of all those people, too. I think it would be a good idea.
I like that idea. I like the idea of taking the questions, too, on a piece of paper or something, and then we can kind of fill out, you know, okay, here's the questions we need to answer. I'm comfortable with that. Does anybody else have other feedback on that? Councilmember Barantone?
If it's not going to be a town hall, and it's going to be more of a State of the City address, then if we're going to open it up for questions, and I think either you or Eric should be speaking with that one voice, and if it's something that council hasn't come to a whole decision on, then that way we can avoid, because we all have different opinions, and so we'll all answer differently if it's something that hasn't been a decided issue. And so to avoid that in that kind of setting, I don't think that's appropriate for those kind of conversations or debates to kind of happen at that place. It should be the city manager and the mayor addressing that for that format. Not other formats. Don't get away with it.
I got a hard launch now.
But I do, oh, no. But for that format, I think that that would be important, because then if council hasn't come to a, if we're still struggling with something or debating on something, then I would think that you guys would be professional enough to say that's still something we're looking at and talking about, but then we wouldn't get caught up in that kind of.
Sure. And I totally agree. I mean, I think sometimes the answer is, that's something we're working on, and that we're going, you know, we don't know where we're going, and we're going to have that conversation. I think it's a totally appropriate answer for some types of questions, so. Councilmember Russell?
I'm fine with doing it that way, but I also know that when we did it with the summit, we had no trouble doing a panel and staying within our bounds and making really short answers. And it was, I think people liked it. They liked seeing different perspectives on it. So I would imagine that most of us will be pretty grown up about that part, but I don't mind if just two of you answer all questions.
I'm open to, again, I'm open to what's your pleasure here, you know.
Nice where the digits are low.
We're hearing that, you know, should we have questions or not, I think is, you know, the first question, and I think Councilmember, Councilmember Barantone, you're saying no questions, or you're saying questions?
No, I'm, well, I am taking some exception, too, that we might have some disagreement on where we're going with a policy or that, and being categorized as being grown up enough to handle questions. I'm just saying that we would have disagreements or different takes on things, and I don't think it's grown up or not grown up to just artificially agree with each other for the sake of a presentation. For that particular event, I think it's probably best if we speak with one voice through the mayor and through the city manager.
Okay. And, but Q and A, you think, is appropriate, as long as we keep that in mind?
I won't be there. I won't answer a question. I think it's the city show, it's what you guys want to present, and have it all kind of formatted out, and then probably the questions will be more along those lines, so probably stick with that.
Any other feedback on the Q and A portion?
I have zero problem with you two doing it.
I can get backup, though. I can bring Eric. That'd be helpful.
You should all be there.
Oh, definitely. No doubt, no doubt.
Sarah was right the first time. You [laughing].
Which you prefer not.
Let's see, what else do we need to talk about? Do we want to do, I think the topic of a multimedia presentation or a video, short video presentation was discussed. Does council still like that idea? I think one of the, you know, goals with that would be to try to create a snippet from each elected official so that we all, you know, had a voice and could, you know, provide some detail about what we're working on, or what the vision was, or something like that. Councilmember Yates?
We need to be careful about the video aspect. We don't want to dive into it and make a huge video presentation, because the cost goes to the roof.
Agreed.
You know, the presentation can be a multimedia type of presentation, such as, you know, little video clips and, you know, PowerPoints or images, still images that shows our city, and something that can be used also online, not just with somebody narrating it.
Other thoughts on a video? Councilmember Russell?
I think it'd be, this is completely different way of thinking about it. I'd love to see a video that actually is of Inglewood folks who answer maybe one or two or three questions, like, what do you love the most about the city, and then what do you think are the biggest challenges, and maybe one way that you want to see yourself engaged in the city in the future. That would just be, it would, I don't know, something like that might be kind of fun.
I love that concept.
Where it's not us talking, again.
Have you seen the business video that we just put on our YouTube channel? I encourage everybody to take a look at it. I think it's a home run, and if we could do something similar from a residential perspective, I think that's exactly what you're describing. And, but, you know, I think that's different than, and I think that would have more shelf life than featuring the electeds, but I'm open to, you know, the thoughts, other thoughts there. Mayor Protem Gillett?
I sort of like the idea of video. You can do them well and quick. You can say a lot in 30 seconds, if you're prepared to say it. I've seen some, you know, our church does a bulletin, video bulletin, and they say a lot of information in a short amount of time that is very helpful, and it's done in a fun way, you know, not just, hi, I'm Rick. And, you know, you can do it a little bit exciting, have some music in the background, kind of, kind of make it a little bit more entertaining, something that people want to watch, so I have no problem with it. I'll have to have a stand-in for me. I'm just kidding.
Who's the, who produced the business video?
Rand Viva.
How much did that cost us?
Allison? So they did a series of [inaudible].
Come on up. Thank you.
They did a series of videos for us. They did the economic development, employment video, as well as the Allen Water Plant video, and I believe it was something around 15. So they gave us a smoking deal.
Total it.
Were there just those three?
Those, those three. That was last year's project, so we'd have to...
Thank you for that. So there would be some budget cost potentially if we wanted to do something as professionally put together as this business video, and so maybe we can pick this issue up next time we discuss this, about whether or not we like the business video format, or whether we want to try to produce something ourselves that features more of the electeds. You know, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like there might be openness to this idea of creating a more resident-focused video that would feature the community as a place to live more so. Councilmember Yates, do you have some?
Yeah, I would be more in favor of community, you know, conversations versus electeds. This is not about us. It's about our community, and that should be said by the people.
Amen. And how long was the business videos? Two minutes, right? You know, I could envision us featuring both these videos if it was about the same length, you know what I mean? We could have a two-minute video and two-minute video. Could be a potential possibility.
You mean, show the business one and then do another?
Yeah, and do the residential one, and we could show them both.
It's about $5,000 to do a two and a half to three minute?
I don't talk to them.
If you were to...
And I think part of the major cost was interviewing, and, because they were onsite at businesses, interviewing the entrepreneurs, and, you know, it was, yeah, it was fabulous. The testimonials that came across were outstanding. So it sounds like we can kind of maybe pick this up, and maybe, do we want to get a cost, or do we want to try to do it internally for little to nothing, or do we want to try to get something from DITA?
Let's do it right.
I don't think we have the skill and the staff to do it internally, so.
Fair enough. [laughing]. We could have done it, we could have done it on my phone, you know, I do, we could have done it on my phone, so I appreciate that. Maybe the direction, then, is to try to get a quote for a resident-focused video and see about that. As far as who will present, are we comfortable with the mayor? Do we want to do a joint presentation with Eric? Did you want to comment on that or something else?
I want to comment on something else, but I think I'm fine with the mayor and the city manager both. I don't think any of us need to present or anything. I think it's fine, just the two of you.
Okay.
I'm fine.
So Eric and I will get together and figure out some sort of split on this, and figure out how we'll do that presentation in conjunction with Slate. They're going to help us with actually putting some language together and speech writing and things, so Eric and I, I think, can kind of pick that ball up and keep it moving forward.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes, please.
On the list of, the laundry list of things we're going to talk about, I would like to add one more. If we're talking about the police building plans timeline, I would like to talk about the schools, the elementary school building timelines.
Fair enough. You know, and I did think about that, you know, does it, do others agree with that? The only, I just didn't want to step on the thunder of another body, and so, you know, I just, you know, just had some sensitivities there, but it obviously impacts quality of life greatly here in our community, so.
And I don't think we need a lot of details. I think just to mention it, that this is also happening, you know, in the next two years, something like that.
I think that's great, and we could probably coordinate with the school district to get some public information that's generally available. Mayor Protem?
I just wouldn't want a school event, you know, school.
Let's not pretend like this is our project, yeah.
We're budgeted different. They have their own communications stuff.
I think we can highlight that and say, hey, look, this isn't our project. It's a separate body, but just FYI, this is impacting our community and impacting our quality of life.
And it is.
Yep, no doubt about it.
So that people know we have schools.
No doubt about it. Councilmember Yates?
Yeah, we do.
Just throw a little bit more in there. Yeah, keep it short when it involves the schools, but it's important that we show prospective families that we're investing in our schools, and we're bringing, we're raising the bar.
I like that. Councilmember Barantone, did you have something to add?
We do have to make sure that we're not stepping on their toes, and we do have five school districts, so we have to be careful about that, because they're all inclusive, included in our community here, and we don't want to make it look like we're excluding certain districts via their name. So we do have to be careful, and I had a conversation with somebody from the school board, we have to be respectful, that that's their thing. They are elected officials, and it's not, we may think we're tooting their horn, and sometimes maybe we're not tooting it the way that they think we ought to, because it's not our, not our job. So we do have to reach out to them and make sure that we've had any, they have an opportunity to vet anything that we say.
Where are we at on a joint meeting with them?
If we say anything at all, so.
I was going to say, too, we could just ask them if they want us to mention it, or if they don't want us to mention it.
There you go. I think that's an easy way to do it.
If they do, easy. If not, easy to.
But I think with the disclaimer of, hey, we have five school districts, this isn't our project, this is something the school district is doing, you know, a brief, a brief broad overview, I think, would make a lot of sense, so I'm comfortable with that. But I do want to try to get in front of them, because, you know, we talked a little bit about their communication efforts and our communication efforts, and trying to kind of coordinate a little bit so that, you know, as they're talking about what they're doing to make the community better, we can kind of cross-promote a little bit. So again, I was hoping for a joint meeting with them. Do we think that's coming forward at any point? Are we open to that, I think, at this point, or no?
Yeah, I think we are. I think it just got rescheduled from the last date.
Cool.
I don't know if there's any proposed new dates on the table, but it's hard to coordinate all of those schedules.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, okay, great. If you wouldn't mind, yeah, try to get us coordinated sometime, yeah, next month or something. Other questions or comments regarding State of the City more broadly? Because I think we've got some general consensus. I guess it's back to date selection. Does anybody want to give us more feedback about the date selection? We've heard last Wednesday, we've heard Saturday morning. Other thoughts?
Other than Monday nights?
Oh, we heard Monday nights? We heard fifth Monday? But then we heard a loud objection to that, so.
How about Tuesday night?
Councilmember Yates?
I still say that for us to try to nail down a date right now is probably not the best thing. We should let these guys do some of their magic and figure out how long it's going to take to do this stuff, and see how it's starting to put together. Then we can look at it and say, okay, this type of presentation is going to be best in the evening, or the day, or whatever it may be.
I think that's reasonable. You know, the only thing I'm a little bit worried about is, I just don't want this event to spill over into the summer as the election cycle starts to start. You know, I do want to have this event, you know, certainly prior to the end of the second quarter here. Can we get some agreement that that's kind of the timeframe we're looking at? Because, again, I just think if it starts to get into the election cycle, I just don't think it has all the value that we're looking for here. Thoughts on that?
I agree.
So maybe we'll come back with some proposed dates, you know, maybe what we can do is create, you know, again, I just think we need to give some direction. Is this an evening event? Is this a morning event? Again, I think it's an evening event. Can we get consensus on evening versus morning? Just to give them, that way they can just pick a few days, and then we can actually say, hey, I'm not available that day, or I am available, rather than giving us 50 different options, morning, you know, weekends, evenings, everything.
Evening works for me, although I understand your point about a Saturday morning, but evenings are better for me.
Me, too.
Okay, evenings?
I think we're going to get more in an evening.
Yeah.
Um, is that enough?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's enough.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you can start to give us some dates that you think make sense, and perhaps we could start coordinating and say, hey, I'm out of town that day, or whatever, so that we can start to coalesce upon a date via email, perhaps? Is that a reasonable way to push this forward?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's move on to our next issue, because I know we've got other things to discuss besides the State of the City.
Thank you. I think that's really great direction, and I know that we'll start moving forward with what we've discussed tonight, so thank you. I know you wanted an update on the Inglewood magazine, and we actually had our second kind of editorial and design meeting this afternoon with city staff, and our designers with Slate have actually started putting together some comp ideas, and we'll have some, the first round of comps available by next Friday, to really start to understand kind of the look and the feel of the magazine. We met with rec staff today as well to really make sure and nail down the timeline of the magazine also aligns as perfectly as possible with the recreation guide and the programs that will be coming out for them. So I think Ryan and I were both in that meeting this afternoon and have a really good idea of the timing for the first publication as well, and then working backwards, the deliverables for, for that publication. Tomorrow, Allison, Ryan, and I are going to take a tour of publication printers, which is the printer that you already use for the citizen and for the recreation guide, to really nail down the cost of doing a larger piece that includes both the rec guide and the city communication elements, and then also determine everything from paper quality and, you know, what, what is it gonna cost to mail this publication? Kind of all of those details, we're gonna suss out tomorrow. We're also putting together a content list of story ideas for both kind of ongoing standing columns. One idea is to continue with the council spotlight in every publication, and potentially having other standing sections like a business or resident spotlight, that of course highlights a different resident or business each time, and then filling in those one-time articles that really highlight what's coming up in the next, you know, three months that the publication will cover. So that's really short overview, I don't know if you have anything else to add, Allison? That's where we're at on the magazine.
So with this next presentation, you'll be able to give us perhaps a laundry list of what might be included in every magazine, and to get some feedback from the council of, you know, hey, here's the items that'll kind of be in every magazine, and we can.
Good question. So we actually did discuss at, today, that at our next presentation, which would be the fourth Monday in March, so the 27th of March, we will have a much larger presentation to provide to you about the magazine.
Thank you. Other questions or comments regarding the magazine? Okay, move on.
And the signature event, so this is really the first opportunity to talk about kind of your thoughts on this event. I have really general, high-level bullet points on this document, but I think it was suggested, and it's a good suggestion, that, you know, we really start thinking about what this event looks like, and what partners might be involved, and having kind of a brainstorming session about what the event could potentially be is probably the first step.
When do you envision that happening?
We put in our work plan a fall event, and that really was just to kind of balance out the July 4th event and a December kind of holiday event. This was only put as a placeholder. I think fall is kind of a nice time to hold an event, but again, that's a broader discussion that is very flexible, and we can, you know, look at calendars and determine if that's right for, for your community. So we had originally said, really kind of kicking off the brainstorming in May, but we can certainly do that much sooner, especially if you decide that a September event is not the timing that you want, you want to bump that up, we can start looking at, really diving into that piece of the contract and the project much sooner.
You know, I think September timeline sort of makes sense, you know, I know that we've had probably some internal conversations, but the council realized and had an opportunity to, to give some feedback on what they view is a signature event, or what that looks like. I did pass along to the city manager several names that I thought should be included in sort of the brainstorming process, several folks along Broadway, some folks that we interviewed our last board and commission rounds who were involved in public events in Rhino or Baker, who are residents of Inglewood. And so I think we've got about five of those-ish, and so, you know, my thought was that we could have a meeting with them, and maybe it's something with them and Slate and the council, and we could all sit together and brainstorm, might be an idea, maybe they can get some feedback from them, bring it back to us on the 27th perhaps? Well, maybe not the 27th, but perhaps the next time you guys are around. Because I think there's gonna be a lot of planning necessary here, and, you know, backfilling September, we've really kind of got to get on our pony here to make this as successful as possible. You know, I view September as kind of the end, because I want it to be warm enough where people can be out and about. I personally view this as a South Broadway event, I like the idea of shutting down Broadway and making it pedestrian-only, and doing something like that is what I kind of had in my mind. I, you know, in my mind, we need a theme, we need something that relates what we're doing with our geographic location. For example, you know, Chalk Art Festival, you know exactly where I'm talking about, and what it is, and where it is. And I think if we could have something in Inglewood where you could say, that event, and they know, oh, that's on South Broadway, that's in Inglewood, that happens in the summertime, that would go a long ways for us. Councilmember Russell?
Are we going to be doing the State of the City event every year?
That's a good question. Honestly, I, it's either an every-year, every-other-year type of an event in my mind, but I think that's to be determined. I don't know if I have the answer to that. You know, I think the next council will have to make that decision about when they want to have it.
Well, and the reason that I asked that question, I mean, if this, if the State of the City, that would be one of the signature events, correct, or?
That's not what we're using that term "signature event" to mean, but it is obviously an event.
Okay, well, and I guess the reason that I'm, that I'm asking that is then we would have four events every year, so, I mean, I'm thinking maybe we don't necessarily want to do four if we're going to do State of the City every year. That's my only thought.
Councilmember Wilson?
That's a good point, I hadn't even thought about that piece, but I thought it was also, I thought the State of the City was one of our signature events, but if it's not, and if you're gonna go every other year, and I think the next council has to decide this too, I really would think it'd be smart to do it, if you're gonna do it every other year, do it on an off-year when there isn't an election, so you don't have to run into all that kind of stuff that goes on, and you can, don't have to, you can be freer in picking dates and times that work well. But I would think for this year, the State of the City would feel like a signature event to citizens, because we've never done it before.
Other thoughts or comments on that?
So on, on the Broadway one, you were thinking of something like a eats and beats type of event, where, but much more where we have actually closed down and stuff, and it seems to me like that needs a big planning committee with the businesses more than, I mean, with us, a lot more of the businesses, because they're not all on the same page about doing that.
Agreed. You know, there is a, you know, a group of folks, I think, who are trying to engage folks on the 33 and 3400 block for a Last Friday event, so there's actually some synergy.
Is it Friday or First Fridays?
Last Friday, because it doesn't want to compete with First Friday on Santa Fe, so Last Friday would be the concept here. And so there's already some energy right there of synergy amongst those businesses, trying to correlate and do some joint marketing and things, and so I totally agree, that's why I was trying to get the city manager's office, some, you know, group of folks, and if you'd like, if council's interested in who those folks are, maybe Eric can send out those folks, and if you want to add to that, or you've got somebody else you think should be included, feel free to sort of add them.
Well, we should probably think of what's, what's the purpose again? What are we, what are we trying to do? And the signature, signature events that we have so far, we, if we could maybe list them and say, okay, this is sort of the general purpose of this one, this is sort of the general purpose of that one, the city address, if we don't include that as one, it's still an event, maybe, maybe it's hitting someplace else, so then I think we'd know, yeah, it makes sense to do something on Broadway now, or?
I agree. Maybe what we need is just a laundry list of all of our events, and think about what are the target audiences for each, and that way we can start to think about, you know, timing, and thinking about audiences and stuff in our next conversation regarding how to move this thing forward. Again, my initial thought was, you know, I'd like to get them started with talking with these local businesses so that they could get some of their ideas and bring them back to us, or do we want to be involved in that process? I guess is my first question. Are you okay with them meeting with the five people that I've kind of described, or do we want to add to that, or do we want to do that together? Is everybody okay with them, just kind of meeting with them perhaps in a joint meeting, and then bringing forward some ideas?
I, I mean, he's gonna get, you're gonna get these five people together who haven't served on a board or commission yet, or some of them were, were event planners, which, which some of them were really, really had great experience, but if we don't give them any direction, I'm not sure if they'll know how to figure out what, what's the thing that we're getting at. I, I would hope that whatever we do with these signature events really plays into our comprehensive planning, helping us be successful with that, and so, I mean, I don't mind to have, I think it's great to have those people involved in the planning, but I do think we all, we're pretty quiet tonight about what we think.
Yeah, so I'm trying to pull some teeth here. So, you know, maybe, I think maybe what I'm hearing from you, Councilmember Olson.
Oh, with the Broadway thing, then.
Well, no, I mean, you know, maybe what we need to do is have another brainstorming session before they have that meeting with them. Is that your preference? Yeah?
I think that makes more sense, because, you know, like she said, if we don't have a direction, and we don't know what we want to do, they're gonna not be successful in their brainstorming session, so I think we need to give them some guidance.
Something we disagree with, and that'll be so counterproductive.
I guess, my only point, my only hesitancy is that I feel like when I was talking to them, I had to kind of reel them in. I mean, they were on the streets, knocking on doors, I mean, they're talking to everybody about this already. Exactly, they're doing it without us, and so that's why I was kind of like, okay, let's all reel in, we've got some resources, we've got some help that can help you coordinate this, we can help promote it, and all that kind of thing. So that's the only reason I was trying to get them in front of them, just so that they, you can know what's happening over there without us, and see, you know, give us some feedback on, on, on it. Councilmember Berantone?
Exactly what you just said. I mean, we've been down there talking to these guys, and they have done events before, they have been very involved, they have skin in the game, they're excited, they have creativity, they've got a lot of exciting ideas, and I think that we're trying to hold them back and do a government event, and that's different. A city event might be different than what they're looking at for the kind of energy that they might be going there, and then that might just be more of a partnering thing, so I think that's where we come into some disagreement, is, well, then we won't agree with it, or we won't, I mean, how, if they've got some great ideas about something that they want to do down there, and they've got a lot of great ideas, then how do we collaborate with them? What is it we could do? Not run it, maybe, but maybe there's some things that we could help them with, and then maybe that wouldn't be necessarily our signature event, that we would maybe do something else, or a partnering event, or our, our section of it alongside of what they're doing so that we're not putting a wet blanket on them, or expecting, you guys go away next year, we need to have something that they're participating in, that they have buy-in for, so there's sustainability for this. We're not, I think, trying to create something that we have just this, a bunch of money that we have to do, so that we've got something that they buy into and that they think is sustainable for, for the future. So I would really be in favor of them meeting with them, and, and hearing a lot of what you and I heard at a couple of those meetings, I think that those are, I mean, they're off the chart with some stuff, and I think you guys will, I think you guys will enjoy that, and then maybe see, be that conduit for how we can partner on some of these events, and what would be a better city event, if we have a city event that's more of that kind of, that kind of thing, so.
I'm in agreement with that. I think, you know, the sensitivity what Councilmember Olson brought up is just, hey, let's, let's keep it real broad, and, you know, let's not, let's not run too far down the road, let them know what we're looking at, get some feedback, and bring it back to council. I, I like that idea, you know, thinking it through a little bit more, talking out loud here. Are others comfortable with that, or do they want to have a brainstorming with council You know, if, if nobody's really kicking and screaming about that, I, I think they should just go ahead and meet with them.
Yeah, let the experts do this. I'm probably the worst person in the world to ask about planning events. Amy has a lot of experience, but I don't.
So I think we're okay with, if you don't mind, meeting with them, getting some basic ideas, not making them any promises, saying, hey, look, council's gotta kind of review some of these ideas, and we'll come back and we'll have a second meeting. Councilmember Russell?
I, one thing, I think we need to be really careful. I think if we, the business community themselves probably can take off with things and do it, they may need some cooperation with the city if we need to shut down streets, or whatever, but I think maybe the city ought to let go and let the businesses do what the businesses want to do, and why should we spend taxpayers' money to promote something like that? And they will be far more effective than we are, because they know what promotes their businesses.
Councilmember Wilson?
I agree with that, and I, but I get a little bit, I get concerned too, that we might set them down the road to think that they're going to get all the finances from us, and if this is our signature event, and we've decided it's a certain amount of money, and we're okay with just saying, okay, this is the budget you have, go with it, and we can plan on that every year, that they'll always have $5,000 or something, I don't know what it would be, then that's fine, but what I don't want to do is get into a planning phase with them and pull back on them, and just totally ruin, you know, the feelings with everything. So I, that's where I don't want to get ahead of, of them, but I, I think you're right, I think there are a lot of ideas that they could pull off, and they've tried to in the past, and have sometimes felt the city wasn't very helpful in the process, and the vision was, you know, it was a bit, there was a lot of discord in the business district, but I think that they've probably resolved some of that over time now, so it's probably a good time to let them try some things, but I just don't want to get their hopes up for something that we don't want to sustain, you know, sustain over time, unless we've decided what that is, and that we're just fine. We're gonna always have a signature event on Broadway, and it's always gonna have this amount of money that we can give to them, and go for it. I would prefer that kind of thinking and be upfront than getting ourselves into something where we gotta back out of it.
You know, I certainly think we need to disclose that, I think the main purpose of the meeting is try to understand what they want to do, you know, independent of us, you know, what we're trying to do independent of them, and then look for that middle ground, and be clear about that process, and that we're not making any promises in this meeting, that this thing's gonna be funded forever or something, you know, and I think if we say, hey, look, you know, this council's interested in looking at this, who knows what the next council's gonna do? You know, we can't bind the future council in that regard, and so I think as long as we're tactful about how we have that conversation, I think we're okay in that regard, as long as you are sensitive to that a little bit. Any other thoughts on the signature event planning? Okay, seeing none. Anything else from Slate?
I don't think so.
Thank you for leading us through an interesting conversation, appreciate all of your efforts. We are gonna move on to Agenda Item Two, this is Public Information Officer Update. Communications Manager Allison Carney is here to update council on upcoming events. Good evening.
Hello, I'll just stay right where I am. My first question for you tonight is, we've been putting all of the upcoming events right onto your Outlook calendar, do you like that? Is that helpful? Okay, all right, we just wanted some feedback on that. Okay, we'll continue to do that. Tomorrow night, if you know any small businesses or entrepreneurs, we are having the Small Business Association here for the Emerging Leaders Program, right in this room at 6:00 PM. So that's just the free information session that talks about the classes, and those classes will be April through October. So if you know of anybody who could benefit from those, that starts tomorrow night, on...
Do they have to apply tomorrow, or?
No, I think they just can learn all about it tomorrow. I'm not su, oh, let me see.
Is it on Facebook? Sometimes I wonder about those things.
If there's a...
Facebook is a really easy way, I think, for us to kind of share it, or at least for me.
It just says space is limited, but it doesn't give a deadline.
Okay.
But we could put this up tomorrow. Next, Wednesday, March 1st, Whiskey Biscuit is opening. Do you all know where that is on Broadway? Okay. On Fri, oh.
Yeah, it looks nice.
I went from videos to mattresses to whiskey. That's what it's been the last few years. Evolution.
It's not, I don't think they're having a, they're not having a celebration that day, so it'll just be open to the public starting on Wednesday.
Oh, there's no, okay.
Yeah, there's no grand opening, but it's just open. Yeah, the soft opening, I think, is the two nights before, where they're, they'll have small reservations to see how things go, and then open to the public Wednesday.
See if they're open to ribbon cutting, that'd be awesome.
If they what?
They're open to a ribbon cutting?
I know, I don't, I haven't heard it.
Do that through the chamber.
The chamber, yeah.
Friday, March 3rd is the Apartment Association of Metro Denver at Alta Cherry Hills, and the RSVP is necessary for that, that's at noon, and then, as I'm sure you're aware, Thursday, March 9th, the 7:30 breakfast meeting at the wastewater treatment plant with Littleton Council. A little update for Citizen of the Year nominations, the deadline is tomorrow at 5:00 PM, we have three.
That's it? Oh, no.
I have distributed to my list, we talked about it at the community meeting.
I know, and it was in the newspaper twice, it's been everywhere, Facebook next door.
Push it out to your people.
Yeah, so that's tomorrow, so hopefully we'll get a few more.
Yeah, I'll get it on my Facebook, too.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me know about that, because I was so curious how many we've gotten so far.
How about our meeting with Diana Deget? We had a couple folks, was everybody okay with that date and time proposal?
Yeah, it's Friday, April 21st. Right now, it's a, it's a breakfast meeting, but that's fine for the morning.
Is everybody okay with that? I think Mayor Protem Gillett wasn't able to attend, would you be able to attend one of those other dates, or do you want us to proceed without you?
Which state?
Is 19 through the 21st?
Friday, April 21st.
Yeah, I'm not a town that does.
She was saying that she could do the 19th through the 21st, is that what I heard?
I don't, Krista's been doing those emails.
Okay, I apologize.
I just heard, I heard through the grapevine.
Fair enough. Try to respond to the email, and I'll, I'll pick that up, the email.
Mayor, just a late-breaking thing with Congresswoman Deget. I met today with Devin Granberry and Mark Ralph to talk about setting a, a date for a Tri-Cities meeting, and actually, Mr. Granberry said that he might, he's gonna try to lobby Congresswoman Deget's office to, to be prepared to come to that, to hit all three councils at one shot, along with a discussion on Santa Fe improvements with CDOT. So those would be the two topics that would be for that meeting, and he is working to set a, set a date for that, so stay tuned. We may end up having to cancel our breakfast meeting with Deget in order to have her hit three meetings at once.
Awesome, I like that idea, we can kill two birds with one stone in that meeting.
What were the two items you were talking, Santa Fe and?
Santa Fe and Congresswoman Deget talking about.
Oh, just her general.
Just her general report.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to Agenda Item Three, this is Expense Reduction Analyst Project Update. Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkles is present to discuss the ERA status. Good evening.
Good evening. So we just wanted to bring you up to date on all the activity we've had around this. We're gonna fondly call them ERA, so as I go through and say that, then know that it's the Expense Reduction Analyst Group. Back on August 1st, you all approved the contract for us, and moving through the presentation, if I can get the buttons to work, oh, look at that. We wanted to start with what process we go through. So we've got several projects going at this point, we take them first through the baseline, where we gather data, and we're getting stakeholder information, and from that, we end up with a baseline. Now, the baseline is what it's costing us today. From there, we've taken all the information we get, and we put together RFPs, and evaluate the outcome of those RFPs, and then come up with a recommendation. That recommendation will give us an idea of what savings we expect to have. So we select the suppliers, the recommendations, and then we start implementing. From there, we continue monitoring, and that's where we identify the savings, and it's actual savings, it's not just based on the studies. So we'll go forward with that, so. With that, let's take a look at the first three projects that we've gotten through at this point, at least to a post-recommendation point. So we've got the merchant cards. Right now, we've got merchant cards, which is where we take the credit card payments in 10 different areas across the city. They stretch from Pirate's Cove to the Rec Center, to our cash receipts office, we've also got them in the business licenses, and just pretty much everywhere. We had about five different vendors across the city with this project, we're narrowing it down to one, and so we're getting volume discount, and looking at being able to save about 25% based on our current volume, which ends up being $64,000. Waste Management is not the company. Waste Management is not the company, Waste Management is the, is the service, so it includes trash, recycling and porta-potties. So with this one, we've come up with about 42, almost 43% or $49,000 that we believe we can save. And these are all estimates and they could change depending on where the actual RFPs come in and the contracts that get signed. The Non-Employed Retirement Plan fees, we're looking at 41%, this one is recommended at this point, but we've taken it to. The Non-Employed Retirement Plan Board, they're reviewing it and the financial advisor of that group is also reviewing it to see if. They believe all the savings are available. So we're there. Pretty excited about these. It is, it is, and that's just the first three projects.
It was a great idea.
Twenty-five percent and above, that's amazing.
Isn't it? Yeah. These guys are experts and they know where to look for the money, which is great. So on this slide, these are the projects that we have underway that we're gathering information for and starting to put RFPs together. And the estimated recommendation date that we believe we'll have these done. After that, we launch a few more, we start working into the banking, utilities, consumables and so on. So we're pretty excited about this project, it's a lot of work, but I think we're gonna see a lot of savings out of it as well.
Comments or questions from council? Councilor Russell?
So what were they charging us for this service?
Fifty percent of the savings for the first two years and then we get 100% of the savings ourselves afterwards.
Okay, so like when it says $64,000, is that 50% or is that the whole?
That's the whole savings.
So we're only saving $32,000 the first two years?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
First two years.
Well, you're not even charged it to say, well, never mind.
So, and it's not the calendar year either, so if we start it in March, the year would go, first year would be the next March, second year would be the March after.
Feel me on that one for just a second there.
Other questions or comments? Yeah, thank you, I look forward to getting an update as this thing moves forward and we get some actual savings, that'd be awesome. Moving on to. Well, we're actually, we're gonna see the contracts coming forward, right, so those are just estimated savings at this point.
Right, right, now the merchant contract we're hoping to bring to you in the second council meeting in March.
Awesome. So they're probably pretty accurate estimations, is my hope. Okay. Let's go, we're gonna head and move on to the monthly financial report. Again, our Finance Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkles present to discuss the 2017 January and 2016 December monthly financial reports.
Okay, great. So the December report is pretty much the same report you saw last time, we just updated the expenses and the revenues because we're still collecting those and booking those back, so. The actual 16 year is not quite closed, we believe that for the, at the end of February, for our March report here. We will have the pretty close to final numbers and we'll put it on the full format for you. So this month, we had revenues increased by another half a million dollars and the expenses increased by almost another 700,000. So we'll still see that happening as we go through cleaning up, we asked for all of our invoices to be in by the middle of February and so we're, we've got those processed.
Quick question on that, I think you said at our last. Update that you anticipated that we might have a surplus of about 2 million?
Right, right now we're looking at 2 million and that's at the end of January. So we're believing that we'll come in somewhere between a million and a half and a million 750, better than. Revenue's better than expenditures for the year, so that'll help build our fund balance a bit.
That's awesome, and even better than where we had our year-end estimate midway through the year, so that's really fantastic, that's great. And, you know, I was a little concerned, you know, in the past, we'd, you know, I think taken what we call the conservative approach and trying to leave a little bit more wiggle room and so it's great to see even with kind of narrowing that gap that we're still having year-end savings, so kudos to you guys for managing that.
Any questions on December? Okay, January's not terribly exciting because it's just the first month of the year, but what is exciting is that we've got almost a half a million dollars of revenue, more than we expected at this point. It's kind of in the area that we see the one-time revenue, it's Area 7. So last year, our Area 7 was the one that kind of caused us issues. And this year, we've got half a million dollars more than we expected. So we're hoping that we can keep that riding and that it won't be the issue for us this year that it was last year. Other than that, our expenditures are down and a lot of that has to do with billings happen a month after the work is incurred. And so we haven't seen as many invoices, the invoices that come in in January typically get booked back for the services that are completed in December. So we've got that, we also have only three weeks of payroll in the month of January. The reason we have that is because the first payroll straddled both years and we had to book the first week of it back into the 16 year. So we will catch up, I promise you.
Sounds pretty rosy for a January report to me, that's, don't downplay that, that sounds fantastic to me, so. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on, how's everybody doing, you wanna just plow through, press the break here? Yeah, let's go on to the next one, there may be a break after that. Moving on to the next item is Discussion on Impact Fee Study and Implementation. We're ready for a development impact fee presentation for Mr. Keck.
See if we can advance this forward here to get to the presentation. So, thank you Mayor, members of the City Council, this particular item is coming forward as a result of last year's council goal-setting discussion. Wherein there was a concern, obviously, with new development ensuring that it's paying its fair share. And this particular item, I believe, has been a long time in coming, as the council is probably aware, we have a pseudo-impact fee already in place, if you will. Which is called our Park and Lou fee, essentially, when new development comes in, they pay 25 cents per square foot for, of building area for. That goes towards parks, however, in the past, councils have rebated that back or done other things with that, but. Impact fees are a little bit different and so I wanted to have a brief overview this evening, as well as to gain consensus as to whether or not you would like us to see us move forward. With bringing forward some sort of professional services agreement for a firm to actually produce impact fees for us. So going forward, what is an impact fee, this is just a basic statement of what it is, it's a one-time fee used to fund capital improvements and this is paid for. By new development and these fees are commonly referred to as development impact fees, DIFs, or capital facilities impact fees, or CFIs. Here in the state of Colorado, under the state statutes, cities obviously do have the ability to assess impact fees. And to varying degrees, some of our surrounding communities do assess these types of fees. Again, what is it, it's legislatively enacted, in other words, council would adopt an ordinance that places impact fees into place. That can cover any of a number of things that we are able to provide service-wise, so our city charter indicates the types of services that we're going to provide. And you can assess an impact fee for almost any governmental function, so for examples, aside from parks and recreation, you can have general government. Police, fire, water, wastewater, but of course, for us, we have enterprise funds and so those are already covered, but. Streets impact fees are commonplace here in Colorado as well to help with infrastructure. And I mentioned as well, you can also have them for general government to help pay for city, city buildings, municipal buildings and such. It's paid by new development only, again, new development comes in, protects existing development. Who's already perhaps paid a fee to come into the community and in our case, that hasn't been the case, but. Moving forward, if in fact the city council were to enact development impact fees, new development would pay their proportionate and fair share of nexus. Of their project's impact on our capital facilities. It's collected at the time that a building permit is issued and it's assessed based on a predetermined formula or fee schedule, which we're gonna talk about a little bit more moving forward here. So what impact fees are not, capital project costs only, so example, if we have an existing deficiency in town, so if we have a specific. Project that we know is already failing due to the existing conditions, we can't have necessarily a development, a new development come in and pay for that deficiency to be cured. It pays only new development share of project total cost and what that means is, that again, a new development is going to have to be examined with respect to our longer-term capital projects. To understand what impact are they having on our parks, our police, our roads, general government, you know, as a whole. We cannot actually use impact fees for building onsite facilities, it's only system improvements. So for example, a great example would be the new Ironworks Village that's being proposed, they are all private streets. We couldn't assess an impact fee on top of them building their private streets or build something onto private property, this is only for public improvements. It's a regulatory fee, it is not a tax, as defined under Colorado revised statutes. It's not an affordable housing deterrent, I think a lot of times, some people fear that putting impact fees into place stifles the construction of affordable housing. And that's simply not the case, it's gone through a number of challenges statutorily and legally to be shown that it's not an affordable housing deterrent. And it is also not an impediment to move up home purchases and what that means is, there's a lot of folks too who believe that if you put impact fees in place. You're going to somehow inhibit folks from moving up into some other type of housing because they can't afford it. Again, it's predicated upon what impact a new development, whether that's an apartment complex, single-family home, duplex, commercial development on your capital facilities today. So here's just some things on rules and regulations. There's, there are two words that are very important with this, nexus and proportionality. So nexus, what nexus means is that a development, when it comes in, again, if you're gonna assess a fee, has to have some sort of impact on. A particular category of an impact fee that you're gonna assess, so I'll use parks for example. If in fact, the city of Inglewood utilized a population-based acreage formula for its parks, so you'd say we have 100 acres per 1,000 people or some, some formula like that. And a new development comes in and they're adding hundreds of people, we would need then to look at what nexus does that development have on impacting our current facilities? That's nexus. Proportionality is, if we wanted to build a new park in Councilmember Berantine's neighborhood, which has been identified as a park desert. We can't have a new development over at Ironworks Village paying for a park over in that neighborhood, there's no proportionality that nor nexus. But the proportionate share would be, how many homes are being built and how does that impact your capital facilities? Rubric or structure for indicating how much should be paid for a park per housing unit. Fees are only paid that are directly impacted by new development and that's a critical thing, I think that. Everybody needs to understand that we don't go retroactively back and say, Mr. Yates, you didn't pay an impact fee when you built your house or did some sort of alteration of your property. It's only a prize to, to new development as a whole. Fee amounts, again, are gonna vary by property category, so what that means is. You're gonna have a single-family home, it's not gonna pay the same thing as a duplex or a multifamily property or a commercial property. So again, there's proportionate to capacity and demand, if you build a bigger house, more capacity to man, you're gonna pay a higher fee. New development receives a fee reduction for impact fee projects it provides, so again, if a new development comes in and they're gonna build a bunch of infrastructure that basically take care of themselves, they build their own park. They're, they're not gonna have to pay necessarily as high an impact fee, but again, that's looked at proportionally, as well as a nexus for the need for that particular capital facility. It can be used for new projects or to pay for expansion of existing infrastructure due to growth, so if we determined, for example, that. We wanted to expand Cushing Park and had the ability, if there were, if this were the case, it's not, if there are property adjacent. I don't want anybody to hear me incorrectly thinking we're gonna be taking over somebody's property, but if there's land, vacant land next to that and we figure that that's. A way in which to provide park amenities to those new folks, you can do that with an impact fee. That would be permissible.
So.
Yes, sir.
Over at Oxford, we've got the new apartments and everything and we've got the issue with people trying to get across Oxford to the light rail.
Yep.
So if there were to be another apartment complex that went up there, we could do an impact fee for a portion of the cost of doing a pedestrian bridge.
You got it, and that's exactly right, so as we're looking at moving forward, we would need to make sure that we had a capital facilities plan. That had to it, impact fees tied to it, so we're, these are the projects we're saying that are necessitated by new growth. And that's exactly right, anybody who's now coming in would pay a proportionate share for a pedestrian bridge or the trail in general, that's, you're spot on. Yes, ma'am?
Then I have a question, so the new apartment would pay only a portion of the share. The city at this point, because we didn't charge impact fees on that development, would have to make up their share of what should have been paid.
That is also correct, so you're spot on with that comment as well. So why would we look at implementing impact fees? Well, again, this goes with the theory that new development should pay its fair share or its way. Rather than having the existing residents subsidizing improvements that would need to be made. For example, this, the second bullet here talks about offsetting tax increases due to the cost of capacity. So in other words, if we're not assessing impact fees, and this is what Inglewood has been seeing for a long time with its new development. And again, I'm not impugning anybody who's come before me, but this is just a natural state of things, you add more people, you're not adding, you're not charging for new infrastructure. What happens is, it takes from the entire whole of the general fund to pay for these improvements. This helps to offset that cost, not 100%, as Councilmember Russell just pointed out, they pay a proportionate share, but it helps to help with building capacity for capital projects that are needed. It preserves the current revenue for its intended purpose and that is existing development, so again, you're not robbing from your general fund reserves to pay for. Pay for 100% of capital improvements that are needed for future development needs, it helps to preserve that. It helps to maintain existing levels of service by protecting the service standard provided, so example, again, our parks and recreation, we have a standard of number of acres that we want, types, number of parks. It helps to protect that standard by having new development pay for supplanting and adding to that particular standard. Benefits new development because there's an equitable cost allocation with predictable service, so basically, when you're assessing an impact fee, you're telling the new residents that. That funding is going towards certain capital improvements, whether it's road widening, new bridges, pedestrian bridge, park expansion. Those residents are seeing that that money is gonna go towards those types of improvements. And it helps to decrease the subsidies for infrastructure from broad-based revenues, which we just talked about, you're not having to figure out, geez, now that we've got all these, these new developments that are going on. What are we, what are we gonna have to give up in order to provide services to them, whether it's police or parks or streets? And again, it really helps to promote comprehensive planning and growth management, it's basically a growth management strategy, it's not to deter growth, but it's to ensure that the new growth pays its fair share. So impact fee considerations, as, as communities move forward with these, you look at an incremental implementation. That's to help, like it says here, to avoid sticker shock, so for example, you may decide that you want to implement fees at 80. 80% as opposed to 90 or 100% of the calculated maximum over, over a period of time. Impact fees can be used for any directly related service that the local government is authorized to provide, we covered that earlier, so again, the things that we'd be contemplating at this point in time would be. Streets, parks, police, perhaps general government if we had capital needs for that, if we need to expand our facilities. Impact fee has an estimated life of five years, this is the tricky piece. So what this means is that you can hold those funds for that period of time, but at the end of that, either you put, you put those. Funds to work building the infrastructure that it was intended or you may have to rebate that back. So that's, that's a piece that's come in over time with respect to legal challenges of impact fees. Impact fees, again, can be used for any capital facility required by charter or policy, so again, there may be a category I've missed that the council decides, hey, you know what? I hear what you're saying with the three categories, streets, parks and police, but we really want you to look at something else as well. Fees established, fees can be established at a level no greater than necessary to defray the impact, so in other words, you can't go, use it as a means to go over and above what the true costs of a project are. To just have a bunch of extra money in a capital, a capital account someplace. And you cannot double dip and what this means is, you can assess an impact fee and then also say. Ms. Berantine, you're developing the new subdivision, I want you to build the streets and pay an impact fee, you can't do that, it's one or the other, either they build and you get the exaction or you assess an impact fee. Yes, sir? So for example, great example would be, well, Quincy Estates, let's use Quincy Estates for example off of Quincy. When they came in, they had to build streets, if we had impact fees in place and that was a public street, we can't say, you need this street, need a new development. Give us a right of way, build the street and also pay an impact fee.
Really, we're talking about a trade-off?
Exactly, it's a trade-off, but I can't imagine, because our community is largely built out wherein we would be saying, build this and give me some, give me some cash.
We've done a lot of developments where they've had to do infrastructure stuff.
Correct. Correct.
Well, then, actually, they paid the impact fee because they...
They did.
They did it.
Right. Yeah. And in some cases, that cost may be larger.
Since you have five years to use that money for a designated purpose, so would you take and, like, determine a couple of, two or three different projects that need to be done, so you don't end up in a bind at the end of the five years, so you know that money's going to definitely go somewhere? Obviously, we have to find money to do the other portion of it.
Correct. That's absolutely correct. So we need to be very calculated and careful about what projects that we would want to have. And this is the very heart of the discussion that I think is going to be taken a little bit later this evening with our budget, not just looking at the general things. I think capital is one of our biggest needs. And so we have to be very targeted with that, and work with you as council to help us determine what those priorities would be.
I think those broad categories, and that's probably why you selected those, of streets, parks, and police, because, you know, the impact is obvious, or relatively obvious, and we have constant need there, where we're not going to have to, you know, lose some funding there. Councilmember Russell?
The one thing that I wrote down is being careful of charging an impact fee and then not having the funds to make up for the other people. I mean, like, there's streets that need to be replaced, and, I mean, we have a huge capital improvement fund. If we don't have the money to pay our share, we're going to lose out on the other income, on the impact fees.
Yeah. Replacement of infrastructure, unfortunately, is also not covered under impact fees unless you're replacing in order to widen, or adding some other public benefit that is necessitated by the growth. So, for example, we have been setting aside about $850,000 to $1 million a year to update our streets. You're not going to use impact fees to correct that. That would be considered an existing deficiency or an existing program. But if we built a new street someplace, or we needed to widen a street, for example, and I can't think of examples off the top of my head right now, but there may...
Oxford and Windermere.
Yeah, okay, Oxford and Windermere. That may need to be, that could be an impact fee project if we know that within a five-year period, we're going to have development enough to occur there that would necessitate that.
Or we're going to do it anyway, as a result of what's already happening.
Exactly. You got it.
Councilmember Berantine, do you have something else?
Even if you make them broad, if you have a formula and you collect a certain amount for streets, and then they pay for a certain amount for a pedestrian bridge, you can't combine them. If you don't do the pedestrian bridge, you can't float that money over to the concrete portion of it. So they all stay project-specific within that five years regardless.
Right.
So if we don't do one of them, it's not fungible in between the categories for what you...
That's very accurate.
For what you do. Are we considering, two questions. What do you think the turnaround time is to get, since you're talking about having a consultant do this, impact fee? What's the turnaround time? And now, once you do that, what I've seen in other municipalities is anybody who's willing to build anything is going to try and rush things through because they want to try and avoid those additional fees. Whether we're considering doing a halt to any of the permitting, especially for larger ones, I'm not sure about homes, but, well, I'm kind of, it's sad, because a lot of the major projects that we were doing have already happened, but are we considering putting some kind of halt now that we've brought this up and we're moving, if we decide to move forward with it, that we don't do any other permits?
That's an excellent point, counselor. I've experienced that in two other states, in Utah and Idaho both. When we were looking at doing impact fees or changing our fees, there was a mad rush of people to try to get permits in under the wire to pay the cheaper fee or no fee. And, no, it's totally understandable. However, that's a policy question, as you've enunciated, as to whether or not you would see us put a permit freeze on. Or in some states, and Mr. Comer unfortunately is not here this evening due to a family medical emergency, to answer this, in Idaho, we were able to do a pending ordinance statute, which basically indicates that if something's pending, you can't have a rush to try to beat it. It's, you know the fees are coming, you pay the piper. So that's part of it. Yes, ma'am?
One other question. So like, when we have high density, I mean, I've been saying for a long time, we need more police because there tends to be more crime in close proximity of each other when you have high density. So we can charge an impact fee for those extra police that we need, but that will only pay for them for five years, correct?
Actually, let me correct something. An impact fee is used for capital facilities, or capital equipment, not personnel.
Okay.
So what you would do is, you would use that impact fee to acquire new police equipment, cars, SUVs, pay for part of the building. But you're right, that money can only be collected and utilized in that five-year period.
Okay.
But, yeah, the personnel costs, that's on the city to provide for operations and maintenance and ongoing.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
It's not collected four or five years. I mean, it's...
No, no, it's once.
Right, okay.
It's a one-time...
The issue's okay.
Yeah, no, you got it, counselor. It's a one-time payment. So let's talk about, the recommendation you've already probably gleaned from my presentation, what it is, and that's to, that council come to consensus and say, let's move forward with this. And I didn't answer Councilmember Berantine's question, how quickly could this be put together? I've already talked to two preeminent firms that do this work nationwide. One of them basically said it would take him about three months to create the fees. However, of course, after that, there would need to be some discussion with the council to determine, are you going to implement this? Here are some options of implementation. Here, you know, so that could probably be a three-to-six-month proposition. And we know already that we have a subdivision coming with some of the infrastructure work going on, with General Ironworks site, as well as anything else that may come in under that period of time. And, again, I think we want to be conscious of the fact that, again, this isn't to thwart development. We want to be business-friendly, we want to have that investment. But at the same time, we're hearing very loudly and clearly that our residents want to make sure that they're not helping to subsidize new development through them paying additional taxation, which we can appreciate, certainly. So to give you an answer to your question, Counselor Berantine, I believe it would probably be, you know, three to five months to be able to get it done and implemented in time for any project that's coming forward.
I have heard about them doing the pre, you know, the...
Pending ordinance?
The pending ordinance is coming. How, what would be the, could we find out, since he's not here...
Yeah.
What the timeline would be to get something like that put in place?
Sure. Absolutely. I'll ask Mr. Comer. Okay. Now, let me just answer one other, let me just enunciate one other thing that's very clear. Again, from my experience in dealing with these in a few other states, this isn't a panacea for curing any ills that we might have with our capital facilities plans. As has been clearly stated tonight, and I think understood by several of you on council, is that we're going to get a proportionate share from new development, but we're also going to have to come up with the difference to design and construct these facilities. We need to be very clear in setting those boundaries with anybody who's coming in to design a fee structure for us, to understand that. Typically, what a fee structure would look like for multifamily, it's a per-door or per-apartment fee. And, again, just surrounding communities, those range anywhere from, you know, $1,200 a unit to, you know, for a multifamily, to $2,500 for a single-family home, like they're using in Westminster. But there's different levels of fees. You get to establish what those are, but, again, they're predicated on capital projects, our capital facilities plan. That, again, would be approved by council.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Councilmember Rolson?
So what would trip going either way, either with impact fees or the other kind of project improvement we've done before? Which I don't want to downplay, because we've had some significant infrastructure work done by developers.
Sure.
And to not have the public understand, that is really, it's really important.
I think that's an excellent...
And to know that it's one or the other. It's not, we're not going to glean both.
Yep.
Like, what would trip it? Would it be the size of...
Some negotiation. I think that you would have to start doing development agreements with developers if, in fact, they wanted to choose to go down the road of, hey, we're going to build the infrastructure because we've done the cost analysis, and this is more beneficial to us to build the infrastructure as opposed to pay your fee. And from a timing perspective, the city may wish to have a developer to build the infrastructure instead. However, that's probably only going to be applicable with respect to roads.
Yeah, with where it is, really. So what, would it always come back to us, then? Is that it would always come to us with some negotiation?
I would recommend that going forward, if you do impact fees, even if you don't, you should have a development agreement that clearly enunciates whose responsibility is whose. So, for example, if you had somebody come in here to the city center that wants to do some redevelopment, you would want to determine right now whose responsibility it would be to do certain public improvements, whether that would be to Inglewood Parkway, or they're deciding to build a park, or something like that. That's because this also is a park desert to a certain extent, with a lot of development going on with people, new residents coming in. So a development agreement would stipulate, here's what you're going to do, here's what you're going to pay, and here's what we're going to do as a city to follow through. I think that's a pretty good practice for development.
Do we have an anticipated cost for the study?
Yeah. And in the memorandum, Mayor, I hope that showed up, there was a range of anywhere between about $29,000 to $60,000, depending upon which categories you were to choose. I do have, again, as I said, I've had conversations, I've tried to get a third firm to talk to me, a professional services firm that does this work, but we need to have somebody who's familiar with Colorado. It's so critical. There are several specific nationwide court cases we have to look at. Nolan was being one of them, which deals with proportionality and nexus. Dolan's another case that looks at the rough, you know, whether you can choose the exaction or the fee. And then there's also other fees. Kilo, which basically talks about how we can't go condemn a property on behalf of a developer and then assess the person a development fee as well. So there's a number of court cases that we need to be conscious of, and you need somebody who's savvy with that to design the fee structure so that we're legally on good standing.
And I certainly have no doubt that the, you know, a main value of this is creating that rationale for what is the impact, and what is a reasonable fee to be charging, so that we make sure we're on solid ground in that regard. However, I guess I'm wanting to take a minimalistic approach to this. I, you know, really what I wanted to know, at least initially, was what are our surrounding jurisdictions charging? What is Denver and the Tri-Cities? What are they charging? I certainly don't, you know, I don't want to, you know, price us higher than, you know, our surrounding neighbors. And so, you know, my thought was, let's take a look at what they're doing, and then kind of, you know, pick and choose from those, and kind of limit the scope of what they're talking about. Because if there's something that doesn't happen in Colorado, do we even want to consider that? You know what I mean? I don't want to be the only jurisdiction in Colorado charging some sort of fee. So, you know, again, I just want to try to take a little bit more of a minimalistic approach to it. Councilmember Russell, do you have something?
Oh, sorry. No.
No, okay.
Quick funny thing. In your paragraph, it says $30,000 to $60,000.
Oh, yeah.
I know. I knew it, though.
Why do you get the $30,000?
Sorry.
The $30 option, sir, is what we'll go with.
Great. I'll be doing that on my own, I guess. Good point. Yeah, no, that's certainly the range. And I certainly can appreciate where you're coming from, Mayor. I think the one driver, again, that's going to drive what your fees are, is your capital facilities plan. What realistically could be done in a specific timeframe? And that's where US Council's going to have a lot to say with that. Because this, again, hits our midterm capital projects that may be necessitated by growth. Or if we, again, we were planning and we knew ahead of time that there was land that we could acquire for another park adjacent to Ironworks, we could be, you know, putting that into the mix. But, of course, that's not the case, because there is, we're not making any more land here in Inglewood. So that hurts us.
And I just want to be conscious of what the bottom line is.
Yeah.
You know, as far as what is the combined cost of all the fees charged in that jurisdiction? And I don't want us to go over, you know, I don't want us to be the priciest jurisdiction around.
Right.
So, again, that's where I was wanting to sign the start front, but I think this is a reasonable point. I'm very supportive of this moving forward. Councilmember Berantine, do you have something?
I guess the $30 option is that we just copy Littleton's.
You know, and if the Tri-Cities all look the same, I feel like I'd be on board, but...
I don't know who we'd pay the $30 to, but we'd just put it in Beer Kitty or something.
Oh, boy.
Some of this also is driven by the development. Because if a developer comes in and it has to be rezoned, we can't necessarily know to put it into a capital project ahead of time. If you have, like what Tsukula's doing down there, or what we had happen at Oxford and Windermere, and they get a rezoning for something that's a lot higher density, that's a lot different than what we would have known, there's no way that you can already have a, you'd have to work on that at the time that that development is going through, so that they understood that if they significantly increase the density, or all of a sudden shade an entire road that's going to cause some problems with that, or need a pedestrian bridge, you may not know that ahead of time.
True.
So we're going to have to kind of have some flexibility as we're moving through with that, through with that, too. But it hasn't seemed to have stopped Littleton from having people come and build, so...
No. I think their average fees on a single-family house is a little over $5,000, and that hasn't really slowed much down, yeah.
So would this study actually provide that data, comparison data, too?
It can. I think that's part of what they will do. And I think it's also, I think Councilmember Berantine brings up an excellent point. What happens if you get some, somebody, John Cook on steroids who buys up all the Broadway, and all of a sudden brings a whole new development plan in? And that's where that development agreement comes in handy as well, and kind of talks about how you're going to mitigate the impacts of something that you didn't anticipate. So we can look at that, too.
Councilmember Russell?
So if we're charging park impact fees also, would that eliminate park-and-loo fees, then, also, or no?
Actually, that's something we'd have to ask our attorney about. Because, really, and let's be honest, a park-and-loo fee of 25 cents per square foot doesn't really raise that much money.
Right.
And if you look at doing a, if you had a park impact fee, for example, on the multifamily that's over here, you would have, if it were $1,200 per door, you're going to get more from $1,200 per apartment unit at 107 units than you would get 25 cents a foot.
Uh-huh. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to Councilmember Yates.
When it comes to impact fees, dealing with development, it's a very common sort of thing to be done. Because there is, you know, like Councilmember Russell states, there is an impact to the community when you have new developments, anywhere from roads to police to whatever. So developers are not really, sure, they don't want to pay it, but they also know that if they're doing something that's going to impact the community, that there is a cost of doing business.
Other comments or questions? Councilmember Berantine?
When they do the study, they need to find out whether the communities that have the impact fees are still charging their park-and-loo...
Sure.
Their, whatever they call them, because they'll call them different things. But I believe Littleton still does. And I think because they're such a specific pile of money that, and you're right, it's not that much, but we need to consider it.
I'll look at that.
And not just automatically believe that that's going to go away, either. Unfortunately, it kind of became, I hate to use the word slush fund, but it just kind of, I mean, we weren't really buying the park thing, and it just became kind of this other fund. So if we were kind of committed to making sure that that was committed funds for that purpose, then we might want to consider keeping it. But I'd like to have that discussion.
Sure. I wrote that down as a note here.
Other comments or questions? Councilmember Yates, do you have something else?
Oh, no.
Anything else, Mr. Cook?
No, sir. Thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you. And when might we touch base on this again?
I would think that I would need to probably bring forth, go through a process and select a professional services firm and bring forth some sort of agreement, so...
Bring forward an RFP, is that what you're thinking?
Well, I think, yeah, I could do an RFP as well. I mean, typically with a professional services route in our procurement policy, it doesn't require that. We could do it to see who might be out there. I know there's at least one firm here in Colorado that does that. The other ones are in other states. So, it depends on, if you want me to do an RFP for that, I'm happy to do that. Have to work with our procurement people.
Is that prohibitive to you in any way? I mean...
Just, well, I think timeframe a little bit, but no, I mean, we can do it. I can put one together pretty quickly.
You were not planning on it. What is your plan? Tell me what you want to do.
Well, I was trying to pre-grade, you know, look at the capacity of some of these firms, when they can move. Two of the national firms that I've talked to have some flexibility with their time to be able to do this and squeeze us in. I think timeframe is one I want to look at, to when they can get this work done. Because, again, we're kind of up against the wall with the clock. But, again, we want to make sure that we have some sort of process and look at fees, but that's what I was doing with trying to say, hey, how much is this going to cost?
What you're saying is either it'd be an RFP that would be approved in regular meaning, or it would be a recommendation to use one of these firms without an RFP, also in a regular session sometime in the next month or six weeks-ish.
Month or so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Councilmember Barrantine?
The council as a whole needs to kind of come to some idea of exactly when we implement, you know, the charter requirement, anything over $50,000, and when this professional services and technical services, which, after looking through that and reading that, is really so that kind of common, normal, everyday business kind of things can be done. And I really want to try and stick to the $50,000 so that if we're going over that amount, that we're having an RFP process, that we're having that open process. At some point, the council may want to delineate and get those definitions about what they think, where the line crosses over for that. But, I would prefer that if it gets up past that $50,000 mark, that we're doing an RFP.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. But, as a point of clarification, under professional and technical services, there is no dollar threshold. You can go and select, that's the blessing and a curse, if you will, for that. Again, it's because you don't want to be beholden necessarily to the lowest bid person or group on that. That certainly works well for any construction or commodity that you might be buying. But, yeah, I think that certainly the council could, if you want to see an RFP on this, we can do it. We just need to be able to, say, go tomorrow and get it done.
You know, my thought is, I think you should articulate to us what you think is in our best interest. I think the default is RFP unless you can give us a rationale as to why, you know, that would take too long, or why it's in our best interest to avoid that process.
And that's kind of why I was suggesting that we, that the council come to some idea of what exactly fits into that. Because the argument's been made that anything could be called a professional or technical. So, in trying to go ahead and define those a little bit better for where council wants to see that line and stick with the charter on that $50,000, because the charter does have a dollar amount. So...
No, certainly, yes.
Like I said, I hope that we put it on a council study session at some point.
We will get there, yes.
Council will always see any contractor agreement that's $50,000 or over. There's no equivocation to that. I think it's just, you know, what and how do we want to move forward with procurement in the future for professional and technical services? If you look at the NIGP, which is the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing, I mean, it defines very clearly who a professional service is. So, that's there. What I'm trying to enunciate to you tonight, though, counsel, is if you want to see us move forward with the RFP, I'd like to get consensus, say, go do it now, so we can bring you back the results of that, which would be a professional services agreement with a firm. That's clearly what we would need to do if we want to do that RFP route.
Okay. Let's go to Councilmember Yates.
Well, first of all, if we think of, I mean, if we're going to go down this avenue, we probably should go ahead and get the ordinance going to state, basically, you know, pending, I forget the proper term.
Pending ordinance statute.
Pending ordinance statute. And then, yeah, we definitely need to have a conversation, you know, in the future, how we're going to handle this. But, tonight, we need to move quickly and say, okay, are we going to do an RFP, or are we going to just do it as professional services? Which, it sounds like we have the authority to go either way.
Agreed. Do you have any preference on that?
I'd like to see expediency, but I also understand the concern about if it's over $50,000, you know.
And that's why I want to leave some room for discretion, or as my thought is, again, my default is RFP. If you tell me a reason why, then we can kind of get over that. And I think he has kind of enunciated some reasons why. So, that's why he's asking for, I think, some feedback on whether or not we want to go that route. Councilmember Olson?
Well, in the past, we have not asked for an RFP for this kind of thing, and so I'd be fine with you going ahead on it. I also think that if we're going to talk about it being, needing to be under this $50,000 thing, then I think we should actually take a look at that as well and consider where the $50,000 is now out of date, given the current economic status that we're in, which is a good news kind of thing. So, I'd be more favorable to go ahead and do this and bring back the plan and let us vote on it. I think expedience in this is important. You've looked at two companies already. My bottom line with it all, though, is that they are people, or they are, they do have experience in our state, and particularly maybe in our metro area. Because urban is really quite different than some of the smaller towns. But, this is a major metro area with regional constraints and competitions that are different than even Colorado Springs or Fort Collins. So, but I'll, whatever the council wants, it's fine.
Thank you. I think I got Mayor Protem Gillett next, and then Councilmember Russell.
Thank you. The reason I was kind of giggling, I was going to say the exact same thing Councilmember Olson just said. It's just, she said it for me. Yeah, we, in the past, we've not done that. And I wouldn't have a problem with, you know, we say, we give our city manager the leeway, say, give us your, you know, he's a great negotiator, he's going to try to get us the best deal. And I agree, expedience on this. We want to get this thing done and moved in, and then bring it to council, we vote on it and implement it and be done with it. But, I'd like to see it moved on, and I'm fine with just him doing it.
Councilmember Russell?
Actually, Mr. Kek just shared that if we give consensus tonight to do the RFP, he can get started on it tomorrow. And the expedience, I mean, it's very possible that he could come up with somebody else that's not even on the radar that might be a good person, too. And so, seeing that it could go over the $50,000 mark, I would like to see an RFP.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrantine?
I would disagree. I think it's easy to kind of get caught up in that. We rarely do that, and that's not the case. I mean, for the most part, if it's been over $50,000, we've had RFPs done. And I think that's a good business practice in following our charter. And you did say that you thought that the RFP process could be fairly straightforward and fairly quick and wouldn't tie your hands. And given what she said, I think you might find something else that you haven't. I just get concerned about making sure that we're including and making, you know, following this process so that people don't get the impression that we're doing any kind of insider. It's been a problem in the past, a little kind of ebbed and flowed a little bit. So, I just would like to see that process followed. Maybe you will find some other people that are out there. How much longer do you think we would do the RFP process?
Yeah, I think that that may add another month, just so that we can get it out onto the bid met.
Oh, I didn't think that's what you said earlier, but...
No, no.
It usually takes a month.
Yeah, it takes a month to do that. And then...
Well, and then the opening period.
Yeah, a couple of weeks to select from there, and then bring back a professional and technical services agreement to you.
So, two months, is that a fair...
Probably, yeah.
We're looking at about a three-month process anyway, so...
Probably to write it, yeah, for a consultant to get going.
But, if we had the other part in place, then for the ordinance for...
Oh, the pending ordinance statute?
Pending legislation statute, then. And unfortunately, Dugan's not here to let us know how long that would take, so...
You know, in my mind...
But, I don't think, I don't think it's been done as much as people would like to remember. And it's not a matter of trust, it's a matter of process, and it's a matter of making sure that the government, you know, and tax dollars that we're following a process that's open and fair and can, you know, documentable and that. It's not a matter of trust, and it's not a matter of your capabilities or your ability, it doesn't play into that. That's not a matter of doing a process.
I think the pending ordinance issue will pick up, you know, when Mr. Comer's able to give us some advice on that. Obviously, in my mind, that doesn't come until after we've at least made a decision on this RFP issue. Hearing that it would probably only add about two months, I'll side with the RFP option. Others, I think we've got kind of a split here, who hasn't weighed in maybe on whether or not RFP or no RFP. Councilmember Martinez, and then Yates?
I guess I'm okay with us going the RFP process, although it will slow us down quite a bit. But, that kind of goes against what we were just talking about, the $50,000 rule. Because if you estimate 30 to 60, and it falls within that 50, then maybe we didn't need to do that. But, I think, like some other council members brought up, if you do find other folks that maybe would have great expertise in this that we don't already know about, I think that that doesn't hurt us. So, I think, let's go ahead and go with that.
And again, counsel, can I provide some clarity on that? The charter says, any expenditure over $50,000 shall be approved by the city council. That, we have always done that, we'll always do that, we'll always follow that charter provision until the charter is amended. What we're talking about is our procurement policy at the city. It is not dissimilar to procurement policies of other communities, other corporations. I can appreciate where Councilor Barrantine and Councilor Russell are coming from for talking about transparency and always doing an RFP. Professional services, however, that's like an attorney, a design firm, somebody like this who's so specific and specialized in the work that they do, there is no requirement for an RFP for that. I can appreciate why you would do it and why you would want. But, it also opens the door, because a lot of times when people do the RFP, they say, well, I got the lowest bid, you've got to give me the work. There is no particular rules and regulations under any procurement, professional procurement policy that says you have to go with a low bid. I can appreciate that there may be somebody who comes out of the woodwork and says, I do impact fees all the time in southern Colorado, and here's my proposal. Great, that's great to add to the mix so we can get that level of expertise brought to the table as well. And again, don't take me saying this as an equibbling of what you're enunciating with transparency. We want transparency, too. Or, we certainly don't want somebody saying, well, just because you have a relationship with this firm, that you just gave them the work. That's something we want to avoid as well. But, I'm sensitive to hear that we've got development coming and we want to move quickly. I think that we can. Just understand, it's going to be predicated upon the capacity, too, of our procurement department to be able to get this up and out. I don't have any problem writing it. I write RFPs, so I can put it together. What I want to gain clarity on, bless you, is that if we have an RFP, you don't want to see the RFP before it goes out. I want to be able to send the RFP tomorrow, is what I'm saying. That would help alleviate time. That's kind of administradium that maybe council wouldn't want to get into.
Councilmember Yates?
Couple of questions. If this adds another two months to the process, how does that affect the end picture if people come, if they come in and they want to do a development? Now, granted, we'll put the ordinance in place, but how does that affect that? Or, does it?
Again, you know, I can't predict whether or not there's a bunch of people sitting out there who say, oh, my gosh, Inglewood's going to do impact fees, I'm going to submit my plans tomorrow to try to get under the radar to get my project built before you implement a fee. I'm sensitive to that. I think pending legislation answer from our legal council will help us, whether or not that would help with a larger project. My concern is, I don't know how busy some of these firms are, and it's slotting us in. I could do an RFP, and somebody could be ready to do it tomorrow, but two or three months from now, they're not ready to do that. That's important, too. And I'll write then in the criteria, if you are able to do this sooner rather than later, then that will help our scoring rubric, you know, when we put that together.
Do we, do we know what year the charter says $50,000?
This charter goes back to the 1950s, I believe.
1950s?
Yes.
So, that's equivalent to probably $250,000, $300,000 today.
You know, and we've done a little bit of noodling on that, just because we knew that council, some council have raised that question. And there is, Arvada, for example, still has a requirement that anything over $75,000 goes to their council. There are other communities, Thornton and whatnot, they have a much higher dollar threshold than Inglewood. But, we want to make sure that, yeah, it helps to facilitate business, but at the same time, again, gives our residents and those who are watching the community that we're doing things appropriately, too. So, I get that.
I'll go with the will of the majority of council, but I think in this situation, considering what we have at stake, and there is, you know, there is talk of some other developments coming along. And I'd sure hate to miss that window that we have in the past in order to be able to pay for some of this infrastructure. And with the thought that it's a $50,000, you know, that's a substantial amount of money in the 50s, substantial. And in today's day, 250, or excuse me, $50,000 is a drop in the bucket. I mean, a car costs that much. Not the cars I buy, but...
I've heard of those, yes. Sorry, I don't know if it was Mayor Protem Gillett or Councilmember Olson.
I will.
No idea.
Thank you, Mayor Pro, I'm sorry, Councilmember Olson.
I agree with Councilmember Yates. I do not believe, and I would be glad to be corrected on this, that we have not done this before, where we've required the city manager to do things on this kind of a professional services in the past. We just haven't. We have done it for other kinds of things. And I would be really nervous that we'd get into this protocol where now you need to come to us for every, I mean, thinking about the lawyers, the attorneys themselves that we have to always go out and get. I can't imagine having to slow that process down all the time. You've already checked on two different organizations, you know, could we in good faith say you'll look at least a third one and come back to us with something that makes sense? And then, so I'm pretty adamant about that right now, now. Because I'm really worried about us going down a different road than what's really required in the charter. I fully agree with doing above a certain level for other kinds of capital or goods that we have that make a lot of sense to do that and be able to see that. I also want to make sure that you have the time. So, we're talking about five months now, if we do an RFP. That's from, you know, that's a long time away. So, that's why I, and that, too, I just think makes sense, which is probably why we have it, that you don't have to come to us with three different bids. So, that's my take on it. Obviously, consensus wins, so whatever the rest think.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Gillett?
Yeah, I also want to reiterate that for these type of services, it has been allowed for a city manager to go above. A purchase is not. So, there has always been a difference. And also, these may be, these may come now under that $50,000, we don't know. It'd be nice to know, you know, what they would do. Also, that $50,000 number, I have brought that up, and we have brought that up for years, that that is a silly low number. And just like our pay, our pay used to be $50.
Mine is.
Uh huh. Yeah. And you know what? You had to have a discussion about updating that, and I still think we're below where we need to be on that, but I'm not here much longer. But, I would like to set a council meeting or a study session to discuss that and find out what other cities are doing. But, I would personally like the city manager to move forward and doing the things he needs to do, and he'll report to council. But, I would not want to wait for him to write up an RFP for us to approve an RFP. It just doesn't make sense. So, that's where I stand on that. So, I'd like to move it forward again.
Thank you. And, you know, again, the only reason I'm advocating RFP is not on the issue of the $50,000. It just is, you know, public advertising that we need some help with this, and we may find somebody else who fits right up our alley. That's my main purpose of advocating for an RFP. Councilmember Yates and Councilmember Martinez, you guys are good with the no RFP option. Is that fair?
I'm finding it rare. I thought the only benefit of the RFP would be that maybe we would hear from some other folks that could provide benefit. Can you remind me, you said the two groups that you talked to, they are in Colorado, or they have worked in Colorado, or they have not?
No. They have both worked in Colorado. They're not based here. One is based in Bethesda, Maryland, and the other one is based in, I think, Salt Lake City, Utah. Again, I didn't reach out to the Colorado firm that used to do the, I've worked with a company here called BBC Research and Consulting in Cherry Creek. And I think they lost a lot of their consultants that did that work, but I need to reach out to them again and see if they still have somebody who's capable of doing that type of study for us.
That's my only kind of concern about going with an RFP, or, you know, reason to go through an RFP, is to maybe reach out to people here in Colorado.
Sure. I can appreciate that.
But, I don't want to slow this process down either. So, I mean, I guess that's for us to decide if speed is of priority or not.
Yeah, more of the essence, yeah. You know, and I think to help you kind of make that decision, I guess perhaps, you know, as Councilmember Olson suggested, if we don't go with an RFP, perhaps Mr. Kek could commit to contacting another firm or two. So, you know, again, I'm hearing three who are kind of supporting of the RFP, and three who are supporting of non-RFP. So, Councilmember Martinez, I'm going to come back to you on a consensus on this issue.
I said I'm fine with an RFP for the reason of maybe reaching out to other people, unless, you know, the timeline and speediness of this is a deal breaker for council. In that case, then we should not do it.
Five months versus...
Sounds like a four-three to me. Councilmember Russell?
That's what I was just going to say. We have four for an RFP.
Yes.
Thank you.
And again, clarity...
Get that issued ASAP.
Yeah, I can, I'll get it written and get it out as quickly as I can.
There we go.
Thank you.
And, you know, my thought is, you know, whatever you think is a reasonably, reasonable period, you don't need to leave it open forever, you know, leave it open for a reasonable amount of time.
Sure.
Maybe on the shorter end of what you think that normally would be.
We'll do it as tightly as we can.
Councilmember Olson?
Could I ask then that we put on our agenda, if everybody agrees, sometime in the future, that we talk about this? To me, it really isn't as much about the expedience as it is about following a process that's already been outlined in the way that we operate. I don't want us to come back to him and pull this every single time he's looking for some kind of a professional service. To me, that's more the bottom line on this. So, I think we need to set some guidelines. I don't think we all are in agreement about whether or not that's how it's set up.
You know, I think what you heard from myself and Councilmember Martinez is that, you know, it wasn't necessarily a policy issue, it's just simply trying to get it out there for more input.
But, I don't want, I'd like to make sure that we don't have to keep doing this every single time he brings something to us, that we kind of have an agreement on, you know what? And if the amount of $50,000, or if it's $100,000 or $75,000, that we change it. I don't know if others want to do that or not, but it seems like an important decision, conversation to have at some point, so we don't hamstring that department in the future.
No, I agree. I think we will eventually, I think, get to that point in our policy and procedure issues discussion, and we can discuss that then. Councilmember Barrantine?
I certainly didn't mean to say that it had always or never been done before. I don't think I said anything in absolutes like that. But, it certainly has been, RFPs done prior to that. And I don't think we're pulling anything on them to try and work through some of the things that are going on with the charter. The competitive bidding process for the charter, even for the purchasing agent, is $25,000, and they've got to do a bid for that. a bid for that. The capital improvements is what, you know, has another, that you have to have the bid and anything over $50,000. And it's just been kind of a general agreement that we wouldn't be going over those amounts, especially when council has to approve those anyway. I mean, they have to come to us anyway.
That's right.
And I think what happens, with all the best of intentions, and you can say that $50,000, not to me or any of my constituents, is a drop in the bucket, but I think what we avoid is the exact problem that happened with EMRF. What did the other bid say? Why did you pick that? I mean, I just think it helps to avoid some of that problem when you start getting up in those higher amount ranges for contracts. I just think it helps. If it's under the $50,000 and you find that out, then maybe the negotiating and doing the RFP would have lessened it. I do think it's something that maybe we should put on the study session for the council to agree, because there are several sections that hold accountable the purchasing limits, what comes to council, and those amounts. And of our three jobs, the money is the biggest of our three. And we have to have that information. And I just couldn't help but bring up the example of the EMRF, what happened with that when we kind of ended up getting into the weeds on that.
Don't mind, let's not go into EMRF tonight here.
Well, I meant about just bring, please bring this process back, because I do think it's a conversation. And if council ends up believing that that should be raised to some extent, then I think we need to have that conversation, what that should be so there's some consistency.
Agreed. Any final comments or questions regarding this? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Keck.
Thank you.
We'll move on to deciding whether we want to take a quick break or whether we want to try to plow through to the end of the meeting.
Can I make an agenda change, just throw it out there?
Yeah.
Since our city attorney, active city attorney's not here tonight, can we table item 8A and city attorney's choice?
Yeah, I was actually just thinking that, instead of delving into the policy, perhaps we could have a conversation about how do we want this to go. I started to realize that maybe we need to roadmap this a little bit more to decide, do we want to start on page one, or do we want to try to start with or prioritize topics for discussion? And so my thought was, I was going to try to at least have that basic conversation, and then probably, rather than moving on to a substantive issue tonight, save that conversation for our next time that we get to this. And so again, do you guys want to take five, or do you want us to try to plow through that?
I'm going to take a bio break.
Okay, let's take five. Let's take five. No, thank you, let's take five.
You know, I mean, you can't do anything for less than $15,000 in business.
You can't even buy a restaurant.
Thank you. I know. I mean, that's a small project, $15,000. And that's not, that's not all.
I as well, and that's what we need to up anyway.
Yeah, I know.
Seriously, for seven years, we've been discussing. Just no one seems to have the guts. So it was funny, it was like forbidden conversation to raise our salary as well. Finally, I just said, listen.
Well, you know, for the rest of their lives.
Yeah.
Now you're going to see in, like, people's tires.
You know, I think people are so scared of confronting anybody. You know what I mean? And that's when it's the worst. Like, late at night, when the real zombies come out. I see dogs in their lives. I tell them, from my part of the gig, and that lawsuit's right, that I do every day, I read those things and press them.
Oh, yeah?
That he bought a nine-millimeter underground. Now, I know from doing some research, that's $900 to $1,000. Even the cheap model like he got, where are they?
I don't know.
No, no, no. And then, then they left here, and the car stolen. They left here, they went to Westminster.
Just checking, I was like, damn.
He goes up because he's got a beef with the guy that lives in the apartment in Westminster, and shoots into the door. And then the cops get him and lock him up, and they chase, all those things begin to tie together. Inglewood goes up to Terry, to talk to him, and Inglewood gets, well, I know he's putting me, throwing me under the bus on this thing. I'll fix him. I'll tell you what happened in Inglewood. So he told everything.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, he told him. He said, he said he saw him. He pulled over and said to Benson, who was a kid that had a gun, he said, there he is, if you want him. So Benson told him when he got back in the car, he was trying to rob him, and he pushed the gun out of the way, so he shot him.
Ah, life is not good.
Yeah. And now they're trying to get a, take a decree.
See, that would only be appropriate in exact, in my mind. Yeah. Do you need to show me the agenda?
Yeah, let me show you. I just messed up this whole thing. What? It's asleep? I went through a password change today that totally blocked everything I was trying to do. Like, every time I...
Okay, guys, if I can get folks to take their seats, we're going to start in about one minute.
I did. I took yours, because I asked him to take the part.
To take it off?
He didn't know what was on there. Oh, you. I'm stealing all your stuff.
I know you are. I have to keep my eyes on you.
See, under the dead process here.
You could write that out a petty cash.
Mine. I won't take yours. Well, I got to put it away pretty soon now, I guess.
Sir?
Twenty-minute break, yeah.
Okay, guys, I'd like to call this meeting back to order. We're moving on to agenda item seven. This is budget for, budgeting for community goals review. Assistant City Manager Murphy Robinson and Strategy and Innovation Officer Mark Wolfe are present to walk council through the budget process. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you so much for giving us a few minutes here of your time. Just to let you know, we wanted to come forward with you, to you today, to present to you what we think we may have heard about the budget process. So after the last few meetings with council about this budget process, we as staff had consensus that we think that there were some wires that were crossed in what we were presenting, as well as what process we were actually going to utilize moving forward. And so City Manager Eric Keck asked me and Mark Wolfe here to review some of the council meetings, to really look at what were we hearing from you all, to understand what exactly do you want to see, what do you want, what kind of documentation, what kind of presentations, and how do you want to see this budget process moving forward? Now, please understand that before, we were talking about two separate things. One was familiarity and getting the community to understand what priority-based budgeting was, now looked at as community goals, but, and it was also separately the budget process. Now, we understand that through that process of explaining these to you, that we have to make sure they're co-mingled. And I think that that's what we heard from you. And so what Mark Wolfe is going to do here is he's going to go through what we think we heard after reviewing all those council meetings, and then after he does that, what we think we, what we think we've heard from you, we want to hear from you, have a conversation with you on, does this kind of match the criteria? What would you like to add to it? And gain a consensus from council on how do you want this entire process to look moving forward, starting next month, or starting in the next couple of weeks? Because the last thing we want to do is spend lots and lots and lots of staff time putting stuff together that you all are like, that's not what we asked for. And so when we, when we prepare these items for you, and we bring directors or whoever it may be to present to you on the budget, as well as the superiority-based budgeting and community goals and the community outreach and all of that, we want to make sure we had your, we have your consensus on the entire process as a whole, so that we all, we all know where we're going. So with that said, Mr. Mark Wolfe.
Thank you. Good evening, council. So again, as Mr. Robinson said, we just want to take you through what we think and are, we're trying to interpret your feedback so far. Again, we just don't want to start off on the wrong foot with the budget process. You've asked to start much earlier, which is great. You've already started to ask for a list of items of information to be provided. That's wonderful. Budgeting is hard work, and department, departments spend a lot of time with them. And so what we don't want to do is start gathering information or start down a process and then have to change course. So I appreciate all the conversation tonight already about process. This will be a lot about process. So we'll try to rip through this, give you an idea of where we think the process could go based on your feedback, and you get a chance to tell us if we have interpreted that correctly. So first things first, speaking of process, I really think that a good budget follows a good plan. So in a lot of ways, that can determine your outcome. If you have an inclusive process, a deliberate process, it can lead to a better budget, so that you don't feel like you're shooting in the dark towards the end or rushing decisions. You will get adequate time through this process to look at the difficult policy options. So again, we can start building those, the policy direction that you all give into the budget ahead of time. So the idea is that if we start now, and it's great we're talking about this in February, that if we begin to highlight and discuss those major policy issues that would inevitably come up in the budget, you can give direction back to staff, and we can build some of that direction into, into the budget. Again, not only would a deliberate process help all of you make decisions within the budget, help staff build in those assumptions, but also build a greater understanding of the budget within the community. So not just our process, but an understanding of our challenges. As was mentioned earlier with the state of the city address, not just all the great things that are going on, but why do we spend so many hours in this room and next door trying to figure out some of these difficult problems? So, starting with the basics, our proposal and what we've heard from you is to start with an overview of the general fund next month. I believe we only have one meeting where we could do this at, so we would try to combine these two items. But just starting with an overview of the general fund. I know that everyone is anxious to dive into some of these numbers, so this is where we would start to see our three-year revenue projections, our major cost drivers... drivers, uh, within the, uh, within the general fund, the big drivers that we'll end up coming back to in, in terms of policy. So we can begin priming, uh, some of those decisions. And again, if there's anything that needs to be highlighted and brought back for a further dive, we can absolutely address that. Same thing with enterprise funds, I, I think sometimes it's a little confusing to understand the relationship between the general fund and enterprise funds. Also with enterprise funds, it's not just the services that we provide to City of Inglewood residents, we also provide service to other communities. So how does that break down? What is the actual cost to our residents, uh, versus, uh, the services that we're charging, uh, outside of the city? Our water infrastructure, our wastewater infrastructure is one of, if not our biggest assets. So how do we maximize that? What does staff think are, are some of our major concerns going forward? So, again, just starting with, with, uh, the two major, uh, drivers of our budget, uh, to go from there. And then, this is really where we start peeling back the layers of the onion, if you will. We always give you departmental level, uh, presentations, but after we've proposed a budget. So again, this is taking a step back, give, we're just a couple of months into a new budget, but giving departments the ability to come in, talk to you about what really are their core services. You can think of those as mandated services, but really services that, uh, we always provide to the community, department by department. What are the major cost drivers, which is related to those, uh, core services? What are revenue opportunities? I, I know that our city managers talked a lot about revenue recapture. So again, what are some of our missed opportunities or potential opportunities going forward? And then hear from our department heads, what are their major concerns when they look out over the landscape over the next year? So the idea with these, uh, departmental meetings is that we would put them on a schedule. You would know when departments are coming up, uh, for their presentation, so if there was a particular issue that you would like to highlight, we can prepare for that, so that we're, we're not, uh, coming unprepared to those departmental meetings. And just to recap, I know that some of the terminology, uh, got a little mixed here. To, to recap, uh, we are absolutely proposing no change to the goals, uh, which are the priority-based, uh, budgeting results. We have not changed, nor are proposing to change any of the definitions of those goals. Simply, community goals is a way to term priority-based budgeting results in a way that makes a little bit more intuitive sense to the public, uh, so that we can all talk about it in the same breath without having to explain just that. Well, we started with priority-based budgeting results, and now we're moving to community goals, and they're all really the same thing. So just, if we don't like that term, that's totally fine. Point being, we're just trying to get on the same page with terminology, that there are overarching goals that we hope every single one of our services is hitting in some way, our, our eight community goals. These goals were the basis for the rankings that put them into, uh, put our programs into the quartile system. So again, uh, it's not based off of the quote "performance" of those programs, it's really just a measure of how those programs are meeting those goals. So it really is, uh, a prioritization mechanism that, that we can utilize in the budget. So, and not to be overly pedantic here, but the difference between and the reason for going to a priority-based budgeting system or looking at, uh, our budget in the lens, through the lens of a program, is to get away from line item budgeting, because you're, you really get a true sense of what those line items are actually, actually going towards. So an example would be advertising. So every department has a little bit of advertising tucked away for, uh, community events or what have you. Well, do you want to look at the hundreds of dollars you might save in one line item advertising fund, or do you wanna look at advertising overall in relationship to what Slate's doing and our new communications department? And so again, this will give you, the whole idea of the, the PBB program is to give you an idea of what the, the little pots of money across all, uh, city departments might be going towards.
The one question I have, though, when you determine the budget itself, you do have to have line item information, not necessarily that the final result comes out as that, a- and I understand that we don't have line item budget, but you have to have that information in order to determine money coming in and money going out. Is that correct?
You are absolutely correct. And to a point, um, we will never be able to get away from quote-unquote "line item budgeting," because we have to know where our dollars are. Um, and so, but this is a programmatic and systematic way to see how they relate to each other. And so, you know, you are correct.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and I misspoke by saying going away from line item budgeting, uh, more in terms of through the process that it allows, it allows all of us to budget with a purpose. The programs actually, uh, are more related, or at least directly related, to our goals. So it, it is helpful in that way.
And I think that's the only thing that was brought up, was that, um, obviously you have to have a line item to come up with the budget. So, uh, can we have that just made available to us? Okay. And we're gonna have to.
So I can just do a quick answer, but that, then I think he's gonna touch base on that too. But we do give that to you all in your budget books, number one. Uh, but also, all of our, um, current and up-to-date budget is on OpenGov. Matter of fact, that's what I use as OpenGov, um, for our line item budget. And so we can actually, if we, if you all want to, we can actually even utilize one of these sessions and go through how to pull that data from OpenGov for you as well.
Yeah, because, I mean, I've had some people that are pretty accounting savvy try and get some of this information out, so if there's a specific format that you, you know, process we can use to get that information out, I would appreciate having that happen.
Absolutely.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, and related to that is part of the reason to go through it department by department is that, uh, we can begin to narrow down and focus on those big policy issues, so that those larger discussions, when, uh, you're talking about, uh, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, that's what we really wanna try to get at through the budgeting process, so that we can build in some of those, that policy direction within the budget process. That won't replace your access to line item budgets.
Right.
Absolutely, that, that information will continue to be made available, made available throughout the budget process.
Can I add? I'm gonna add one more thing too, is I, I personally see this as an opportunity for you all, these department director, the slide before, the department directors or whoever that is coming to present to you those budgets, or not presenting the budget, but talk to you about their budgets and their, their mandates and all of that. I see that as an opportunity for you all to go through their budgets too, and say, okay, tell me about this. Why do you have to budget for this and why? And then you, you all will start to see some, uh, variances, but you'll also sees, also be able to see some things that are the same. Like, why is Public Works, uh, budgeting for that, and it looks like ComDev is too? Tell me why you guys are doing that. And I think those are the kinda questions, once they go through those line items with you, um, on those different days, you'll be able to start to see some of the, some of the same things we see when we go through them. So absolutely.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Just quick. The OpenGov, there used to be a link, I just looked at our page, kinda on the front here. We don't have the link there anymore.
It's under Finance now.
Under Finance Department.
It, but it used to be right on the first page. Can we put it back there?
On the homepage, you mean?
Yeah.
It's that rotating spotlight is probably where we had it, where the Citizen of the Year is right now, is my guess.
Yeah, but there's room to.
Yeah, yeah, we could still make a quick link.
It was there when it first came out, and then it went away.
Yeah.
Went under Finance.
Thank you.
That's a good catch, because a lot of people went, oh, you stopped doing it. And I go, no. Pretty sure it got slotted.
Rotated out, yeah.
Place, a home.
And one last note on the, on the programs, is that we are in the process of refining that program list, so we had some crazy number of programs that weren't much more meaningful than line items in, uh, when taken individually. So, uh, our finance department has been working diligently with our departments to refine that list. Uh, we wanna make sure we don't get it too narrowed down, so that it's, that, that some of these programs are too broad to be meaningful. So, once that is refined, we will, we will share that as soon as possible. All right, so how does, uh, and I know you all have had a lot of discussion about this in the past and are anxious to, to look at new models of community engagement. This is an accessory to the budget process, it doesn't replace the current process, we have to infuse it, if you will, into what we do throughout the year. How do we do this? Well, we really need to go through some type of, and we have a couple of suggestions that I'll show you in a sec, in a second. We have to understand what the community's expectations are in relationship to the eight goals. This will help us go back to the program list and refine the rankings and say, okay, well, these lowest quote performing programs are not lowest performing because of their percentage of revenue recapture, but these are lowest performing because they simply don't rank high enough on the community's priority list. And then that begins, taking, you take into account what the community's perspective is, the perspective of all the department meetings that you've had over the course of the last few months, I'm speaking as if we're sometime in July and August now, you take all that information and you begin to understand what are some of the, the policy pinch points that you can begin to work through. So that you don't all, you don't have to handle all of the major policy decisions within the context of the budget, some of them for sure, but not necessarily all of them. This'll give you a nice guide, uh, for what the major policy decisions are, not only, uh, in the 2018 budget, but other items that you want to focus on in a little bit more detail throughout the year. So more specifically, how will we collect, uh, community input? Our suggestion is to use a tool, uh, called a balancing act. I am happy to demo for, uh, for it, uh, like I just have to hop up on that computer, if you're interested in that. We would use, uh, the online tool to collect, uh, feedback. We do have a mechanism to make sure that, uh, they're City of Inglewood residents, that would be a good start. Uh, it's a very general program, so a balancing act is utilized by a number of other communities in the front range and beyond, including the federal government. It is, uh, it can be, we can build our entire budget in there, and the community can see every single dollar. I'm not sure that's the level we're at right now, I mean, we're starting upstream, so again, focusing on those goal areas and just getting a sense, in a hypothetical budget situation, where the community's at in relationship to those eight goals. Understanding how difficult it is to balance a budget. So I can show that tool to you as well. And in addition to that, we'd like to actually get out of the walls of this building and out into the community for a, a few workshops, up to four. And again, that would be with your help and guidance in making sure, uh, that we're hitting the right areas, uh, that they're scheduled at the right times, and that we're focused on, on the right, right issues. So again, big picture, talking through goals, this is separate, uh, and in addition to our mandated budget, uh, hearing that we usually have annually with, with the public. And then, at the end of this process, we would be able to go back to the community and say, hey, by participating in a balancing act or participating in the workshops, these are some of the things we actually built into the budget, based on that community feedback. And I think that's really powerful. Would you all like to see a quick demo of that? I won't go in much detail.
A quick question about the, the community piece of it.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, we put this in, in, it says 2015, we did the, um, you know, next step in Inglewood and had the community meetings, and that just went into place last year, where we came up with the, the eight. And then those weren't prioritized, and we're only the first year into this, so I'm concerned that we're going out and talking to people and making priorities that we're already gonna change, or kind of reevaluate before we've actually had a chance to implement anything. And I'm concerned that we keep kind of going out there and talking to them before we've had any experience with having something be implemented long enough for them to even have an idea of what's going on, and now we're going back out and talking to them again. And I think that's where some of the disconnect might have happened, is because we're doing the priority-based budgeting, we just put that in, we had the eight goals, they weren't actually ranked, or whatever they were called, the focus. And then, it seems like we're doing then the community-based, and it was tied again to going out and having, uh, outreach with the community again, uh, before we've actually kind of implemented the others. So how are we kind of balancing this so that people even know what the last one did or didn't do? Cause I'm not even sure we know whether it was successful or not successful in changing it.
Right, and, and that's a fair point. I think the original process was really to create those eight goals, and this process is not to change those goals. Uh, all of this does is try to begin to apply our budget expenditures and revenues to those eight goals. And so, I'll, I'll show you, cause it, it does display it a little bit.
Well, I think kind of the problem was before, because it was, because of the name of it said priority, and none of the rankings were pri- prioritized.
Right.
So I'm not sure if that, are we moving more towards having some priority to any of them? Because you can't have eight goals that are all equal in value.
Right, I, I do think that, to a certain extent, with the community feedback, you get a sense of where the community, in terms of matching to those eight goals. The, the eight goals are everything that a city could possibly do. Uh, they're very broad. So, this is another mechanism for you all to begin to prioritize through the budget. And again, we wanna tie those priorities to the budget process, because, again, ranking those eight categories may be fairly arbitrary unless you really get into the budget. So it's trying to balance it. I, I, I think it's a step further than just going back and saying, okay, what are your general priorities? Uh, but a, but a step not too far to go all the way to the community with a proposed budget. So it's really an in-between step.
If I can add as well. Councilmember Berantide, I think you bring up a great point, in that I think if we go back out to the community, we need to provide some level of education, whether it be a video before they do this survey, or, um, a talk before you all do the, uh, the meetings, of what the process has been thus far. Uh, because clearly, it's not good, the, the council even has questions about what that process is. And so I think having that level of education before we get into the surveys and all of that would be important. I would also wanna say too, that, um, remember that I think, I wasn't here, but based on what I've learned about priority-based budgeting, is when they form those priorities, they, they weren't being formed as to prioritize one to eight. Um, I think they were being formed to just say, what are our main goals of the city? And they said, everything you can think of, really, um, that we do. And, and so it's, I mean, public safety and parks and all those things. And so, um, it's gonna be really hard to, for us to say, police are more important than parks, or.
Yes, they are. I can answer that. My, my citizens can answer that, yes.
There you go.
Yes. They don't seem to have a problem ranking things like that.
Sure.
I hope that maybe we're, that's what I was trying to get at, is maybe we are gonna, are gonna kinda take some look at that. The citizens absolutely come to me and say they believe that there are the priorities of the city that are above that, so.
Absolutely.
That's exactly what I was talking about.
And I think that this is a good segue, because I think this tool will actually allow for them to go in and do that. So with that, Mark Wolf.
Right, so, that's exactly right. What happens, um. Okay, so, uh, the idea is that, uh, a community member could go into our website, we'd have it linked, we could have, uh, more instructions, I'm just jumping right into the program itself, so don't, don't worry about that. But essentially, you get a picture of, uh, you get a picture of our overall expenditures, where the money goes, and our overall revenues, uh, which is where the money comes from. And the idea is that, uh, a member of the public can begin to play around, if you will, with the budget. You see right now, we're balanced, so let's say I go in and say, well. Right, so thi- this is a, a hypothetical budget, this is as if our budget is a million dollars, this is represented as a million dollars. It would be nice. However, what it does do by using an even number like that, is it shows you roughly what the percentages are. Now, these aren't exact, uh, but for instance, with, uh, sales and use tax, I can tell you that that's about, uh, the percentage for, and this is focused on our, our general fund, uh, we, we do include a small percentage here for our enterprise funds, our, our water and sewer. But that does come out to be about, you know, sixty-some percent of our, uh, our overall revenues. So you can really see that ratio and, and drive some of our difficulties home with the public. So, let's say, I wanna go in here and, uh, well, water treatment is not important to me, take away some money there, well, now I've got a surplus, and I can put it back in economic development, I don't know. Don't hold me accountable for these budget decisions, that is your area. So, again, once I got back to, uh, once I got back to, uh, balanced budget, I could hit submit on the bottom of the page, and this would be right here, this isn't live. And then we would get a report after they filled out some basic information, whatever we wanted to provide, to make sure that they're residents. We could put a council. We could put a council district, whatever. We would get a report to say, okay, these are where their dollars went. We start to get a sense of where the community's priorities are by collecting that data. And the nice thing about this tool is that we can adapt this, they actually have the mechanism to use it in meetings, in, in public meetings as well. So we have that option. The third option, which the engaged public is, is the company behind this, they've offered this to us as well, which is great, something called the taxpayer receipt, that we can also use as a part of this program, which if you estimate where you do your shopping, a percentage of, of your shopping, so if you, let's say, shop at King Supers and Walmart, then you're in the City of Angledwood. If you do most of your shopping at Costco, then you note that. Based on our percentages of our, our sales and use tax rate and our property tax rate, you get a sense of how much your dollars are actually getting, how, how much your dollars are being used for services. So that's a nice tool just to demonstrate to the public where their dollars are, are actually going. So again, you can play around with this, I'm happy to send a, a link of the test to the councils so that you can do a little more with it. But I think it's a nice way to, to gauge kind of where the communities are at in an informal setting, implicitly educating on some of the, the challenges that you all face.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
So this is great that you can kind of shift it and see you move one, you move another, that's pretty straightforward, but where's the accountability in that decision-making? How, how does it show a resident that, okay, if you're going to move this from natural environments, it'll do that, it'll have this impact? It'll mean like, let's say you lost thirty thousand dollars there, well, that's the cost of da-da-da-da-da.
Yep.
Like, will it do that with it too?
Yeah, absolutely.
Otherwise, these are just general numbers.
Right, and, and I was focused more on the numbers, what you can do with each category is every time, every time someone goes in to make a choice, up or down, you can have an alert pop-up, and that'll give them more information. And you can also display more information underneath this so that they have a little bit more context in terms of what does economic development mean. And again, I was trying to stay fairly broad, I didn't want to focus on programs, I thought that was unfair to target certain programs versus others. But you can certainly include review, a little bit more detail in these areas. I'll show you, this is a nice feature as well, just so you can see one of those alerts. So if I said, okay, great, I want to spend a bunch more money on reliable infrastructure, but I have to raise taxes, well, it gives you an alert that you actually have to go to the people for that. So it, it's a nice education tool in addition to, I will not make that change in a public meeting, it gives you a nice way to educate the public as you're going through that as well.
Can you show us another one that's, you know, like a fee for service or something? I don't know.
Sorry, that's, it says, any new fee or raise in, raise in a fee structure must be associated directly with the cost of providing that service. So again, that just gives a little bit more context to what is likely or what is legal with some of these revenue increases.
So you envisioned this being pretty robust then by the time we roll it out to the public, because each of these pulldowns is going to have a, a very long list of programs in it?
I'm of the belief that we keep it as simple as possible.
Yeah, okay, on a macro level.
Maybe a sentence describing, I think the alert is nice because it makes somebody think twice before making some of these choices, but the simpler the better. I think at this point, just pushing the community into our website, getting them used to using a budgeting tool, having some interaction in that way much earlier in the process is really what, what I would focus on and, and less about more detail.
Something else to focus on might be, you know, a target for how long we want this exercise to generally take, you know what I mean? And hey, this should be something that a citizen should be able to complete in fifteen minutes, for example, or whatever.
Sure.
Might be a way to think about it.
Yeah, we can certainly provide a, a cover intro page on our website that provides a little bit more information.
Other communities that have used this, how many people actually take the time to go in there? Is this a successful tool to use in the community?
Yeah, it's been used all over the place. A couple, Wheat Ridge I, I like because I, I believe I've looked at a lot of these. Wheat Ridge, I believe, uses priority-based budgeting as well. So they've actually done something similar with their goal categories like that. I, I forget how many they've actually utilized, or how many members of the public have actually utilized it. We would try to push this out there as, as widely as possible. It's hard to say how many people might use it, we haven't done this too much, but, you know, given we, we do have a, a communications firm and a department, that hopefully we could get it out there. One idea also with, and we, I know we haven't discussed this yet, but with the community workshops, if that is of interest, we could certainly stick a, a stuffer in the utility bill, use some of those other mechanisms to, to try and, and get the word out. Any other questions on this, and I'll wrap up? All right. The stand, so I'll have to hold this. And again, so the idea of utilizing a balancing act and something similar in terms of process would be then to go back out to the community and earlier, ideally the earlier the possible so that we can actually build some of that feedback into the budget. Departments begin building their budgets, really April, May, but have to start drilling down and submitting budgets, I, I believe in June to, to finance. So if we could get those workshops scheduled in April, that would be ideal. And past that, just getting a sense of if this is something you'd, you'd like us to use, we're almost, we almost got it built out, which is nice. It's easy, we can put it online. And then obviously with the workshops, if that's something that you're interested in, we would certainly like to work with you on, on that scheduling and, and structure and, and that type of thing. So to wrap up, does that sound like a budget process that you want to follow? Is there anything missing? Are there any changes? As Mr. Robinson said, we just want to make sure we're on the same page here before we start giving direction back to departments on, hey, we're, we're going down this line. Thank you for your time.
Question and comments from council? Councilmember Keen?
I really actually like that tool. I think the more, the more user-friendly and easy kind of user interface that we can allow for feedback with our community, the better. I think there, people are more likely to kind of provide their input if it's really easy to use, and I think that's a really great tool to do so. So I would really like us to see, go forward with the community feedback part of that.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
Can we get a copy of this presentation?
Yes.
That we had tonight?
Absolutely.
I actually like a lot of it, I'm a little bit concerned about going out to the community in the fact that we really haven't determined what our priorities are. And because I, I still think there are certain things that as a city, we need to make certain we have those, and a lot of those things that are on that list, those are nice to have, and I would, if people want to determine how they're going to spend our money on dividing on those things, but we can only do that with leftover money. We have got to take care of the infrastructure of this city to protect it. That's my only concern.
And really quickly, I think you make a very valid point, Councilmember Russell. I hope, I think our efforts in bringing the departments separately to you all will help highlight some of those issues and help you all with your prioritization on the policy level, policy decisions you have to make.
Okay, all right.
And so, but if there's something more, other than that, that you'd like to see from us to help you gear up for that, please let us know.
Well, and actually, I do, I like this in the piece that's brought forward because this, if we have all this information, by the time we get to October or September, whenever it is, we start talking about the budget, and then plus staff should be more prepared to be, to have it put together earlier. So thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you. You know, it does sound to me like, you know, some information around, you know, maybe a, you know, what used to be called a zero-based budgeting approach might be helpful for Councilmember Russell's concerns or comments there, that, you know, what are the items, and I think you guys have probably already done that work, and, you know, what's in that quartile, that highest quartile of actually mandated, you know, requirements for us to be able to operate, might be helpful for Councilmember Russell to look at, and that might answer some of those questions. I know we had kind of an email chain going this week about, you know, some questions that were asked of staff regarding budgeting and some feedback from the rest of council about how we wanted to handle that. You know, honestly, I just wanted to comment that, you know, I didn't view those as overly problematic, actually getting those questions out, I think, is helpful. And, you know, I don't think that it requires, you know, a formal written report from staff on all of those, I think that a lot of those can just be handled verbally, and as questions come up, you know, I'd encourage councilmembers to ask those so that we can get at minimum a verbal response from staff so that you've got your arms around whatever issue you're trying to understand a little bit better. Councilmember Berentine?
I, I did appreciate that when Councilmember Russell had a private conversation with the city manager, I guess, about those were a telephone conversation, she said in the email, that she put that out to everybody to let us know. And I think that that should become more of a policy of council so that when, when individual conversations are being had with the city manager that we're in some way trying to share that information with everybody, I think that's important. And I appreciated some of the questions that she was asking. I mean, some of those do need to be asked, answered by staff. I, I saw the thing about, as an example, the budget analyst, and we just were going to move that position, I think, from, I, I forget from where to where, but, and whether that was helpful or not, what that position did, and I think we had two last year, and now maybe we only have one, and what, how was that utilized last year? Similar maybe to your position, I don't know, but those kind of questions, I think, do need some kind of, because apparently we're going to be using that person in this process, and how are we utilizing that in the process? But in general, I appreciated the, the issue, the item, the line item budget, which is not, it's, I mean, when you're, when you're bringing to council, moving fifteen hundred dollars out of the police department, there's fifteen hundred dollar item that she moved, and that's not what's available to us. When you're talking about moving forty thousand dollars and putting it into the legislative, we don't see that money or where that's coming from or what that was for, or the amount of money that was budgeted in, in a position, I guess, that was in the city manager's office and is getting moved. And so when we're, we're being asked to make those decisions, then I want to be able to see the actual line item budget, and I think that it should be available, it exists, and I think that we ought to be able to have that, have that portion available. Not that I don't believe that there's a fifteen hundred dollar item in the police department that we're moving to legislative, but it, it becomes kind of confusing where it's just, it doesn't really attach to what the original function for that money was, and the purpose and why it's being moved over, so it would be helpful. I do appreciate that you pointed out that the budget is in there, I, I got that in the book, but I, I, I think what I was asking for was, was different, what's, what makes up these numbers in there.
True.
So that when, especially when we're asked to make decisions as we're going through the budget year, we can go back and see what that's about.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
If I can address a couple of things there really quickly, I appreciate Councilmember Berentine's comments, as I do feel as though we need to, when we do these presentations to you, we need to work off of those budgets so you guys can actually see where those monies are coming from.
I think that's what you agreed was going to happen with the department.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes, and so, but I do want to clear up one thing, because it said three weeks in a row now, I have listened to council meetings to prepare for this, about the, about the budget analyst. And I want to kind of tell you about that so that we can put that to bed. So the budget analysts, we originally had two when we created the positions. We took open positions that we had, created those and had them in the city manager's office. As we had those positions, they morphed into understanding that we needed to reach a broad spectrum of the budget. We needed some boots on the ground to help the department directors with budgeting, but we also needed a person who would be able to be policy level and, not policy level, this kind of policy level, but policy level in administration to help us with all of the tasks that we're doing across the city, as well as with community and you all. And so what we did was we split those two out. We took one and put it in the finance department, which that's what we brought to you the other, the other day, and that budget analyst is still the budget analyst, and they're in the finance department and working with the different departments. The other one is a strategy and innovation officer, still working on budget, doing presentations like you saw tonight, and he's sitting right next to me. And so the, the overall, the overall agenda for both of those positions is still sound, and they're still both working on budget, they're still both working on strategy, but the, the actual projects that they're working on vary a little bit. Now, they will be working together quite a bit, as you all can just imagine. When Mark gets done with this meeting tonight, he's going to go back to our budget analyst and say, okay, here's where we're at, you need to help the department directors get ready to present their budgets to the council. And so that's kind of how those worked out. It was a director group decision to, that that would work best that way. And so one is in finance, one is in the city manager's office instead of both being in city manager's office. There was no different budgetary items, there was no, it's not a new position, neither are new positions, they were both budgeted for, as you all heard it before.
Thank you, hey, real quick, if I could interject, sorry, you don't have the floor. You don't have the floor, sorry.
Okay, no, I was clarifying the question.
I don't want to co-mingle, I don't want to co-mingle the reappraisal issue with our discussion of policy on, or our discussion on procedure on how we're dealing with budgeting.
And that's exactly what I was trying to clarify, was that I only used it as an example to her questions on how they were utilized for the budget, and were they going to be utilized for the budget process because they came up in that issue and we were reminded about them, and so.
Agreed, and I think that we, very clearly, we need some more information on the reappraisal issue, and I think we can all agree upon that.
No, but I mean, just what you just said, we need to know that, how they're being used in the budget process, what you're doing, I would appreciate that.
And I, I think if I, if I personally got anything from the conversations that I heard from you all in the last few weeks is that we can do a better job at getting you those items before we bring it to you, whether it be in a regular session or even study session. So we'll do that for you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments regarding how we're moving forward on this stuff? Thank you, guys, I think we've got some consensus then, hearing none, no feedback to move forward with your recommendation as outlined, and we'll look forward to moving this forward. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, council. Thank you very much.
We're going to move on to Agenda Item Eight. This is Council Policy and Procedure Review. As noted, Mr. Comer is out this evening with a family emergency. I guess I just wanted to have a broad conversation with council about how we want to see this process moving forward. Do we want to just start with a review from the beginning, or do we want to try to prioritize some of our issues and take those first? Tonight, I don't want to really, since we're a little bit, running a little behind on our schedule, I do not want to really jump into any substantive issues tonight, I just want to discuss procedure on how to move this forward. Does anybody have any feedback on this issue? Councilmember Yates?
I'd say where we need to start is decorum, because that seems to be the one area that we continue to have issues from time to time. It's gotten much better over the past, past few meetings, but I think that's where we need to start.
Is there any particular portion of the procedure rules where you think is appropriate to review on the decorum issue?
You know, I do not have that in front of me, but I'll put it together and send it to you.
And it's probably both a policy and procedure as well as a charter issue as far as language in both of those?
Correct.
Other thoughts or ideas on a priority or process for moving this forward? Councilmember Berentine, did you have something else there?
No, no, that was from the before.
Okay, no problem. Councilmember Russell?
Actually, if we're going to go through the policy manual and discuss the policy, I think we need to start at the beginning and go through all of it. I've been reading through it, I've actually learned a lot of things. And so I think it would just be, start going through it. I do believe decorum has gotten better in the last couple of weeks, and certainly I do believe that there's some issues that we do need to talk about, but let's start at the beginning, instead of just picking out things that one person, we need to look at the whole thing.
Others want to weigh in on this? Mayor Portman?
No, my recollection is years ago, maybe even when Ms. Berentine was on, they used to, when the new councils came on, they reminded everybody. I remember having meetings with Dan, he would sit down and just remind us of these policies and procedures. It wasn't a long drawn out, I don't even think it went more than.
No, he did it. He did it with us.
It was, I'm. I'm saying, he may, Dan didn't do it with us.
Oh, so did, but did you have meetings?
Oh, Dan did.
I'm saying with this council.
Right, actually, Dan did it with the new council.
Yeah.
With Amy and me and Lorette and Joe.
When you came on, you went to the policy.
It was very abbreviated, and it was in that crazy overwhelming day of learn everything about the city.
It was one day.
Yeah, exactly.
Tour, you had the tour, you had the tour and the, and the policy review.
Right. One hour.
Fire hose.
Yeah. So, yeah, to your point.
A lot of it is simple, you don't, we don't need to spend a lot of time, you know, there's a lot of the rules, like the Cal's rules, the Woodward rule, you know, we, I think each council should decide whether or not they want to adopt those rules. They just seem to be longstanding rules. I never understood why they were longstanding rules, and, because they're not a rule, they're, well, it's not law, it's just a, we'd like to do it this way. So, those might be some things we can look at, but, I mean, there, a lot of it is easily spelled out. It would be nice to make sure we all hear the same thing, and we're all agreement that it all means the same thing to all of us, so we can move forward as one. And I have no problem going from the beginning, I don't think it'll be that long of a process. I understand Mr. Yates's concern about that, and I, and I hope that we'd get to that portion, we could even get there in that first meeting, so I'd like to just, I think I'm agree with Ms. Russell. We just, let's just go from the beginning and make sure we're all on the same page. And for some of us, it might be right at the end, you know, of our tenure, and for others, it'll be at the beginning, and we'll, we'll see what happens.
Thank you. Councilmember Barantine?
I would agree with Councilmember Yates, I think the decorum has gotten a lot better on council, and I appreciate that. I do think because Dan has always been the one who had done it in the past, the city attorney had, that it might still behooves to go ahead and make sure that we're on board with the city attorney, that we're in agreement with our new city attorney and what we believe our policies are and our procedures are, so that, as I assume they're the ones who are going to be answering the questions if issues come up, and that we're on the same page with them. So, I still would believe that even if we do it, we're going to have to redo it again once our new city attorney comes. I believe that that's an important piece of kind of developing our relationship and having that kind of understanding about where we're all at. So, I'm not sure if you want to do it twice, that's fine, but I do think it has to happen with her.
So, you're saying you want to wait for the new city attorney?
If you want to do it twice, I'll do it four times, I'll do it 20 times if you want to, it doesn't matter to me, but whatever gets the job done. But I do think that once she comes, we need to make sure that we have that conversation as a council with her as well. So, it's up to you guys.
Thank you. I'm hearing a couple of members saying they want to kind of start from the beginning, probably of the policy manual itself. I'm hearing one person saying we should probably start with decorum issues and wherever that language is referenced in either the charter or the policy and procedures. Others want to weigh in here. Mayor Protam again?
Just real quick, I would like for our new city attorney to come in with the well-functioning council. Who knows what direction we're going? She's going to have a million things to worry about when she gets there. This is not one of them, and I think, I'd like to get moving on it as soon as we can.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
As one of the newer members of council, in hindsight, I wish we would have done this from the beginning, spent a little more time, even if it was just from, you know, the three new council members' perspective, but I, I don't mind starting from the beginning on this. I think it will probably go very quickly, it's going to be way overview for the current council members that have been on a long time, and I think it might just be catching us up to speed in a little more detail as a group, which I don't think could hurt. And like Mayor Proton Gillett said, I also want the new city attorney to come to a group that is the best functioning that we can be, and so, I don't want to wait for that. And we also don't know, we don't have a date specific that she's going to come, so I don't want to kind of hold this off for that. So, I'm fine starting from the beginning, I think it'll go pretty quick.
Thank you. Anybody else want to weigh in? I'm hearing some consensus starting to gather around continuing, or starting this from the beginning with the beginning of the policy and procedure manual would be my guess of what, or interpretation of what's been said. Seeing nobody objecting strenuously, I'm going to suggest that we have consensus on that and that we're going to move that forward at our next appropriate study session with Mr. Comer. We're going to move on to council member choice, anybody like to kick us off? Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Yates.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barantine?
I'm, I'm a little, it's a little disconcerting that we had a city attorney choice, I'm glad that he's not here. I would like to see that this item move to an executive session and that we get legal counsel. I don't understand why it was, it's public, but I would really appreciate before we have a public discussion on this lawsuit, that we get some legal advice, and I think that should be, happen in executive session, so.
Yeah, I generally agree as well. I would say that, you know, anytime a new lawsuit's open, an appropriate first step would be an exec session with counsel in my mind, so I'll agree with that, and, yeah, thank you.
It was published, so, I mean, it is part of the packet, so, I mean, the, I mean, there are going to be questions about it, but I hope that we can hold back until we get some Mr. Rice here. And how the attorney got picked?
Well, I think that is a question too, whether we want outside counsel at the exec session is probably a question.
Right, so if we could discuss that then, I would prefer that this entire thing be discussed in executive session, I am not comfortable with discussing it any further.
Do you want Mr. Rice there?
He was assigned by SIRS, just so council's aware.
Thank you.
That's common.
Thank you. So, we, I guess we are requesting an exec session with outside counsel and obviously our city attorney. Anything else, Councilmember Barantine?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Russell?
Actually, on the Tri-Cities meeting with the city of Littleton and the city of Sheridan, I really would like to see it separate from the meeting with Diana Deget, because we have enough information that we need to discuss apart from her, and so, I'd like to, to keep our meeting with Diana Deget and, and separate that.
Thank you. I want to get a little feedback on that. Do we want to keep Tri-City with Congresswoman Deget, or do we want to separate those two events?
I'd rather separate them.
Separate? You guys okay with separating?
I'd prefer to separate it. I mean, we have quite a few issues that have come up for Tri-Cities.
Okay. Starting to hear some consensus around separating.
I'll pass that along to the organizer, which is Devin Granbury of Sheridan.
Yeah, thank you, sorry about that, we kind of changed midstream here, but I do generally agree, we've got a lot on our plate for Tri-City that's actually fairly substantive this time around.
If we do it together, we can't talk about Sheridan like we like to.
Oh. Awesome.
Now, they're the hosts, they're going to open it up with that, I'm sure, so.
Last time they hosted, we went to Red and Jerry's.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Right.
I don't think we're going to be there. I think it's a live.
Anything else, Councilmember Russell?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Nothing.
Thank you. Heading to mayor's choice, I just wanted to, I forgot to mention that Broadway Brew Supply is having their ribbon cutting this Friday at four. Apologize, I probably should have mentioned that to the PIO, that way we can coordinate those things, but yeah, but I apologize. So, if you've got some time, it's 4,000-ish South Broadway and the 4,000.
4,391.
Thank you. Chick-fil-A grand opening was very successful, you know, last Friday was a great day for Inglewood business. We kicked off the day with our business resource kickoff with Aurora SBDC, that was well-attended. We rolled out our brand-new video, which, again, in my mind, is a home run, please check it out, that way you can give some feedback on what might, what you liked and didn't like about it, because in my mind, that's a pretty good model for the resident video that we kind of asked staff to get a look at. Finally, I wanted to give a reminder for those attending NLC, the CML has asked us to do some scheduling with them, so if you haven't returned, I know seating is limited on some of those meetings. Done? Good for you. I'm preaching to the choir because I haven't done it yet, so I need to go back to my office and in fact that form back in, but...
So, did you get an email today about a speaker that was identified, and is that just the lunch? Sessions?
No, no, there's a separate form that they gave us with four different meetings.
No, no, I did that, but we got an email today.
There's no speaker?
That Sessions has been, we can talk about it later.
Oh, the general Sessions speaker? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, Jeff Sessions is speaking.
Yeah, awesome.
But you had to register for it, but is that for those who are already in? Yeah, well, go look at your thing, and maybe I'm just not reading, I'll...
Okay, I'm going to have to reread that because I didn't catch that. I appreciate that. Yeah, if you don't mind, forward it to us, because I'm not sure I got that.
I'm sure we all got it.
It just came from NLC.
Came from NLC, so maybe it's just telling us who's speaking at that event.
I viewed it as spam, yeah, apparently I viewed it as spam, because I don't think I, yeah, okay, I need to go check my spam folder perhaps, but if anybody has that, please resend it to me, if we do in fact need to register for that, because I haven't done that. City manager's choice.
Mayor, just quickly to discuss next week, you had scheduled before the March 6 meeting a study session to discuss the 2015 codes adoption, and we've been requested by both community development and our fire marshal to push that off a month, as they found some irregularities within the code and the amendments themselves and how it might apply to Inglewood, so they asked for additional time. So, that kind of frees that, frees that time up. I'm happy to cover the strategic plan update at another time or whatnot, but if you still want to have a study session to do that, I'm happy to, to talk about strategic plan next, next Monday before the business meeting, but that's a question for you as council, how you want me to handle that.
Yeah, I apologize, I don't have the study session topics.
Yeah, and again...
You're just promoting one from our next one to the study session prior, I mean, that seems appropriate, and you think strategic plan is the one to do?
Yes.
What else is on the agenda for that following study session?
Well, again, the 13th meeting has been canceled, so we go all the way to the 27th, and there are, there probably is, what we probably could do, maybe, is do some budgeting for community goals if we have some time next Monday before the business meeting too, if you would like. We could at least start to get into the revenues and expenditures.
Comment six?
Or are we, yeah, we're going to be here at six.
Okay. And again, we apologize for the fact that this agenda, there were some items are missing. As many of you are aware, we had a major security incident last Wednesday, right in the middle of the planning for this meeting. And while I can't go into great details with it, there was an armed individual in the building who was in the city manager's area, who did brandish a weapon. We're still kind of rattled by that. What I wanted to tell the council is that we are going to be taking some definitive measures for securing this building to help with that. Obviously, we'll be bringing a plan forward where necessary to the city council to deal with that. But what I will say is that, from my perspective, sorry, I'm getting choked up because I saw the barrel of a gun pointed at Mr. Robinson and myself, is that Murphy Robinson, Assistant City Manager Murphy Robinson saved people's lives last Wednesday, and we're, I'm just blessed and happy that he was here to help with that, because otherwise, you might be, we might have a different outcome.
Here, here.
Thank you.
I'm also happy to add that the next day, we were able to identify this person and take them into custody, so.
They were, he's in custody, which is helpful. But again, council, just understand that you will be seeing some differences in how we secure our, our building and how that's managed, and again, if there are expenditures that we need to bring forward that may require supplemental appropriation, we will do that.
An actual supplemental?
An actual supplemental appropriation. Thank you for making me laugh.
Unless you want to take it from somewhere else.
I need, I need that, yeah. So, just wanted to cover that, because I think it's an important thing for, it's not just the protection of our employees, but it's also of our residents, because we had customers in the building at that time too, that were impacted by that lockdown, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I really, I mean, I think all of us, our hearts were out for you and still are. Are there any things we can do? I mean, I want to make sure that the two of you and others that were involved get the kind of care you need, and it's post-traumatic stress kinds of situation. You do need to take the time you need, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and, you know, one of the things that we do to take care of that is fill it up with work, you know, and keep our minds off of it. But, but I will say this.
We can help you with that.
We have an outstanding police department, they did, had a great, quick response, but you just approved, I think, this last council meeting, an excellent resource in our victim advocate through the Vail Grant that you approved, and I can't say enough for Nancy Winnig, she is one of those unsung heroes of our police department. You don't get to talk to her unless something like this happens, but she does a lot of that stuff in the community to help people who've been victims of domestic violence and abuse, and she's been helpful, and I've got, be scheduling some more time talking with her, because she's just a resource we've got, and she's, she's helped me a little